I'd call the Village of Fond du Lac Board of Trustees meeting to order Monday, August 31st. Due to the state of emergency related to COVID-19, the Village will have limited seating at the board meeting. In addition to the board meeting being available on cable channel 980, you are also able to dial in and listen or speak through the telephone. If you would like to call in, please dial 920-322-6120 between 5:45 and 5:55 on the day of the meeting. Audience members are requested to sign in on the sheet provided at the registration table. Citizens wishing to be heard on topics not listed on the agenda may speak under item C. Citizens may be given an opportunity to speak during discussion of items listed on the agenda and are allowed three minutes for comments. Disruptive discussion or profanity will not be allowed. Real call of officers.
Duffy.
Here.
Hornet.
Here.
Price.
Here.
Will.
Stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, united on, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, citizen participation, citizens who are addressed the board only. Statements are limited to three minutes. The board may not respond to items not listed on the agenda, however, you may ask for an item to be placed on future agendas. Any citizens, don't see any citizens wishing to be heard? Moving down to announcements, anybody have any announcements?
I'll just take one housekeeping note. We've had some more complaints about being able to hear us on TV, so, and I think the masks don't help that. So if you can really concentrate on getting the microphone up to your face when you're talking, please.
Thanks, Nick. Anything else?
No.
Okay. Anybody have anything? All righty. Moving down to, Nick, do you have anything for the library?
No.
Okay. Administrator, Nick?
I have, mine will be real short. It's budget season, and that's pretty much all time-consuming most weeks with all the other, you know, in-between stuff, but mainly last week was budget and finishing up, we're talking about health, health insurance renewal tonight, finishing that stuff up and getting that prepared, but really it's been a lot of budgeting.
That it?
That's it.
All right, thank you. Police Department, Darren?
Thank you. Also pretty short, working on the budget, obviously. Squad 36, the new vehicle is up and running, hit the road, I think Friday, last Fri, maybe Thursday. So far, so good. And we're working on a child pornography case. It turned out to be even more involved than we originally thought, and we found out today that we're gonna have to issue a couple more search warrants, but the good news is that the suspect is still in custody in the Fond du Lac County Jail, so, that's all I have.
Thanks, Darren. Fire EMS, Jake?
Thank you. Same as what Administrator Leonard and Chief Pouch said, working on the budget last week or two, quite depth, and I've also been working on a program with Kim Miller at the Health Department and Bobby Hickin to get N95 testing to important people at the schools, like the nurse and secretaries and some other admin staff in case they have to come in contact with the students. I've been kinda working on that, set up a meeting for the 3rd of September with all the ambulance services and first responder groups in the area to try to get that rolling, and that's all I have.
All right. Thank you. Public Works Department, Darren?
All right, thank you. Just a few things other than budget items that Nick and I have been discussing. Crew's been out doing hydrant flushing last week and this week, it'll go through Thursday. We finally were able to get Waterwell Solutions in town to get back to well number five to televise and test that. The televising is done, the test, all the water sampling is done, just waiting on results and report for that. And then also I've been working on the appliance and operation of the wastewater system, it's a report for the DNR that I do every year. That's all I have.
All right, thanks, Darren. All right, moving down to the consent agenda. Approve the minutes of the following board, Village Board meeting from August 17th and approve invoices and authorized checks to be drawn on their respective funds as indicated. General Fund, $25,727.16. Library Fund, $945.45. EMS Fund, $2,370.34. Capital Projects, $4,379.76. Water Department, $4,618.56. Wastewater Department, $470.48. Stormwater Fund, $187.01, and a grand total of $38,698.76. And also approve the following operator's license for Gabrielle Docnow for Butchers Block and Charlie Beltizor for Charlies. What is the board's pleasure?
Make motion to approve the consent agenda as read.
You got a second?
I'll second that motion.
Got a motion by Will, seconded by Price, to approve the consent agenda as read. Is there any questions or comments on this item? All right, seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Administration, or administrative, discussion and possible action on approving health insurance plan for 2020, 2021.
Sarah Beth is here tonight, we'll be going through the next three, three items with her. We got pretty favorable considering the last two years with our health insurance renewals. They were, I think, 25% last year and maybe 16 the year before, but this, this year a little bit more favorable numbers. But Sarah Beth will have some handouts with her, and we'll be going over those and looking for approval on the three tonight, and then we'll, the following item would be to talk about the employees' share of that. Just, I'll just take it, I'll bring it up for you. All right.
All right.
Thank you. This is like the most paper I've distributed in several months, it feels really good. All right, well, it's great to see everybody again, thank you for having me here, it's very nice to be in person, I look forward to having the in-person meetings, everything seems to be virtual today. So, leading up to the renewal this year, we made the decision in meeting with Nick and Chris to take a look at getting prepared to market in the event that the renewal came in unfavorable. Well, the renewal actually came in relatively good, and we still decided to market, and quite honestly, I'm really glad we did. So, the first thing that we're gonna go through is the sheet that looks like this, and it says medical premium comparison. So this is what we refer to internally as our roll-up. It's a very high-level overview on what the plan designs are, meaning deductible, co-insurance, and just basic plan designs, and what the premium is. So from here, if things look competitive, then we put it on what we call our layout, and then we have a much more detailed comparison, so we're looking at all the nuts and bolts behind the scenes to do an accurate comparison. So, the renewal originally came in with United Healthcare this year at a 9% increase. They certainly were willing to negotiate some, but again, we decided we were gonna go to market to see what else is out there this year. So the next section on here says firm rates, and these would be with broad network options similar to United Healthcare. So other carriers that basically have the majority of healthcare systems throughout the state in their network. So Anthem would be one that came in at a 17.2% increase, and then Humana at an 86.6% increase. And Humana's just not overly, in this size segment, they tend not to be as competitive in this area, when you get further self-dates, they're much more competitive. Nonetheless, we wanted to see where they came in. Then we have narrow network options. So on here you see Quartz HMO, which means that there is no out-of-network coverage, and then Quartz Point of Service, and as you can see, those are both decreases. Now, what you won't see on here is the further detail on the significant out-of-pocket expense that those also pose, okay? So there was actually a lot of added cost share that you can't see just on this high-level snapshot. So we also went to Network Health, they originally came in even lower than Quartz did, but, and I can't really get into details why, there's really nothing malicious behind the scenes on this, it was just a timing of getting some applications into underwriting. So Quartz does not, actually only United Healthcare and Network Health have fully underwritten rates here. If you have questions about it, I cannot get into it in public, you can certainly follow up with Nick and Chris afterwards on it, okay? But just know that Quartz does not have all of the applications in. But Network Health does, they came in at a 5.2% increase. It's actually a little bit better than that when we break it down, which we'll talk about in just a minute. And then there's Robyn Health Partners. They are, actually, Health Partners is a company out of Minneapolis, they're relatively new, only a few years old, but they've been making a pretty big splash in the market. Their narrow network has only Theta, Bellin, and Aurora in network, along with some of the independent providers, but Agnition is not one of them, okay? So they also have a broad network option, they were not competitive on that. They weren't competitive in the narrow network, so, you know, didn't make sense. The Fox Cities Chamber actually puts together something called a Chamber Choice Program that would allow companies to, or employers to dual-choice, meaning that you could offer Network Health and Robyn Health Partners to your employees, so they could choose what made sense, but with Robyn not being competitive, that wasn't a viable option to consider anyway. Then, the preliminary rates that were on here for Arise and WPS, so what we did is we sent all of the information out, they came back with a laundry list of questions to us and said, "These are our base, base, base rates." So carriers can rate up to 300% over the rates that you see here. Now, you guys probably wouldn't have gotten 300%, but based on the conditions that we were talking about, we would've had to call and talk to the employees to get other underwriting questions and things like that answered, and we knew it was not gonna come back competitive, so we didn't torture the employees by going through that effort. So, anyway, that's where the numbers are showing there. And then Health Traditions declined to quote, they just were not competitive on the rates, and as you can see, the Chamber Choice Program is on here as well, okay? So other than the one question that I can't answer for you, do you guys have any other questions for me? Okay. If you wanna flip to then, the next page, on here we have an actual layout, so we did do this with Quartz.
Just, if you could pause. There's, these two sheets look similar, you want the one that has United Healthcare, United Healthcare, and Network Health on the top?
Thank you. So we did a comparison on this for Quartz as well, and actually, Network Health ended up being more competitive before we had the adjusted rates, and Network Health has been a, the cycle that we've typically seen over the last probably six years is the Village date with Network Health for two years, and they move to United Healthcare for one year, then they go to Network Health for two years, then they come back to United Healthcare. It's been a really weird cycle, but for whatever reason, that's how it's been working out. So on here you can see that we have the current plan design with United Healthcare, and then we have the renewal option next to it, which came in at a 9%. Now, Network Health is coming in at actually a richer plan design than what you have today. So today you can see that the deductible is $3,500, but the out-of-pocket maximum, right, that worst-case scenario number, that's $6,350 for a single and $12,700 for a family. Network Health's plan, the deductible matches the out-of-pocket maximum, so it's actually a much more favorable plan design. So looking at the actual rate, it's 5.2% over the current rates, but what Network was willing to do is actually offer a 20% discount on the first two months to the Village, so when you factor all of that in overall, on an annual basis, assuming that the enrollment numbers are stagnant, it is an overall 1.5% increase over the current rates. Additionally, they came in and offered a second year not to exceed, so the worst-case scenario next year for the Village, if you choose to renew with Network Health, would be an increase of 8%. For a group your size, for them to take on that risk is very rare. I have groups that are much larger than you guys that I can't get an 8% not to exceed on, okay? So what that's telling us is the risk looked really good, they were willing to take that chance, but that's nice because if you are gonna make a change, especially to a narrower network of providers in Fond du Lac, for you guys, Network Health is a great choice, it doesn't have Aurora, but it has pretty much everybody else, so, but to make that switch, you wanna make sure that you can stay put for a couple of years, so, I think it's a very good offer, it's a very fair offer as well. And like I said, we did take a look at this with Quartz, truly, overall, it will be more expensive, and the plan design is not as competitive as what Network had to offer.
So, you know, Chris and I and Sarah Beth have discussed, and Emily from, who's not here tonight, from Mccone have discussed this over the last couple of months, and, you know, we've gone to market, and, you know, after looking at all the numbers and, and as Sarah Beth is explaining, when we first got, you know, those numbers, Quartz and Network was more competitive than Quartz originally, and then there was a change made because of some applications, so we only would suspect, at that point we had kinda chosen that, you know, UHC and Network are really the only two players at this point, so we didn't move forward with going, plus we were on a short timeframe, so it would be expected that their plans would likely be higher than Network is offering us. The other thing is, if you recall, two years ago, we actually used a rate cap, if you recall, I think it was 12% rate cap?
I think it was, I think it was even 15, but you calculated, I believe, at a 40 or 45% increase, and that was also the next most aggressive offer that was on the table, so, yeah.
Yeah, so, you know, that is an added bonus too, and it, not to say, I would expect we'll probably see that next year if we go that route, but, you know, if we run really, really clean this year, so to speak, or good, then that, it's a possibility it wouldn't be that 8%, but there's a cap there, which is nice to have, especially the budgeting, for budgeting purposes and the way we do our October 1 renewal, which is great to get in front of the budget, so we know what we're dealing with, but at the same time, it does put us a little bit of a time crunch to try and figure things out, so, I guess that's my opinion and my recommendation is, is to move forward with the Network Health plan.
Mike?
I'm just gonna explain, I mean, they say the 8% is not to exceed the next year, but we also have to figure that 3.5% that we get discounted this year, so it very well could go up 11.5%.
Yeah, it would be around 12%, from what we're going to pay this year, correct? Absolutely.
Okay, yep, so. I mean, to me, it looks like it's a no-brainer to go with Network, so, I mean, it's, I think the lower out-of-pocket is a big deal too, I mean, I don't know how many people reach those out-of-pockets, but...
I, it, I would say it's in the 30 to 40% range, I would guess, sometimes it's maybe a little higher, but, yeah, it is, it's a nicer plan. The other thing that you don't see on the paper is, in every, every, probably every employee we have would tell you that the Network, the use of the plan is much, much easier, as far as getting payments and things processed through, it's a lot less employee paperwork.
And pharmacies, copays, a lot better too, right?
Ah, yes, yep. Once you're, make sure deductible.
Yep. So are you looking for a motion, or are we...
Anybody else have a question regarding this presentation? All right.
I'll make a motion that we approve Network Health as the health provider for this next fiscal year.
Do I get a second, please?
I'll second it.
Got a motion by Hornet, seconded by Will to approve Network Health insurance plan for 2020, 2021. Are there any other questions or comments regarding this item?
Just clarification, Nick, then the percentage of increase over this last year is going to be what then, as far as, you know, insurance cost for the, for the Village? What was the percentage of last year to, in comparison to now this year? Or a decrease? Just, so I, so I'm, I wasn't here last year, so I don't know what...
So we're going, I, I don't know, if, I don't know what I mean.
I didn't wanna say last year, say it was 8%. I don't even know, what was last year's percentage?
Our increase last year?
Yes.
25%.
25%. Okay.
And that was our best option?
Wow.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
And there were, to be clear, we get very, very, very limited information that was certainly more than a warranted increase, because a lot of what you are getting for your renewal is going to be based on the experience of the group, so, but your overall, so we also run benchmark analysis, which, again, we shared earlier with Nick and Chris, but your premiums compared to national and state averages are significantly lower. I very, very rarely see that in the public sector, ever, so, you guys are, I mean, comparatively speaking, running very well still.
Um, I just wanna clarify, that motion is, it is for a two-year. This would be a two-year agreement, basically, we'd be moving forward with.
Okay, so then next year, though, it's limited to 8%?
Correct.
I see.
Yep.
And I said fiscal year, that's not true either, because this really starts October 1st?
Mm-hmm.
So it's for the term of the policy?
Yep.
Yes, so, yes, I'll amend that same with...
This is a two-year agreement or...
Yes.
Okay, I was unaware of that, okay.
Well, if they're gonna give us a...
You're not, you're not locked into them for two years, you could leave if you want to.
That would give us the 8% rate cap.
Right, we, we have that option to take that, right?
Yes.
But we're not locked in with it?
No.
Okay, so really isn't a two-year commitment?
It's up to you guys to decide, I mean, if you, if you, it is not a two-year contract from Network, they are agreeing to give you a not-to-exceed next year of 8%. I will say this, and this is up to you guys, if you feel the need to test the market every year, that is completely, totally your choice.
That's mine, I was unclear on that.
Yes, I will say that when you, it's not a strategy that I would recommend doing every single year, especially when you have a favorable offer on the table. If I put it in perspective, next year, if I go out to market again, like, let's say we go that route, carriers are gonna come back to me and they say, "Why are they doing this? For under a second year not to exceed, I saw this one last year, what are they trying to do with this?", right? Because, I mean, the, behind the scenes, right, any insurance carrier, they're in the market to make money, right? So they wanna make sure that if they're building a long-term partnership with a group, if at all possible, right, if the numbers can make sense, and they're looking for that long-term piece, not for a short-term, every single year. So, if you wanted to vote on it for two years, you certainly could.
I stand corrected, then, we would just do the one year. Right, that's my fault, I misunderstood that.
John?
So clarifying, so we're gonna commit for one year, the second year, when do you have to commit? You know, obviously the policy starts October 1, is there a timeline to say, "Yeah, we wanna, we wanna enter into this max", or is there...
Before October 1st, I mean, certainly you're going to wanna do it well before that.
Sure. Okay, thank you.
Whichever board meeting is closest to October 1st is when we have to do it, by...
Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
So Chuck made the motion for fiscal year, but I, I read his, the motion was for 20, 2020, 2021. Is that...
Yep, it's good.
So is that, okay.
You know, maybe just another comment on that, I, I still think for the one year, but I think when we get close to the next year's renewal, we can again maybe talk to Sarah Beth and just get a feel for it, you know, and if there's, things aren't looking good, that we, rates are really higher, then we'll just say, "Forget it, we'll go with the contract that says a minimum of eight for next year."
Yeah, and I can try to get at least some minimal information, like I said, it's very, very limited at best on what we have any access to, but we can certainly come in and even talk to you guys next summer, just to kinda say, "Here's what we're thinking", and that way, if you want to, you certainly can make a decision much earlier, if that's the direction you wanna go, so.
So I would stick with this first motion.
So are we good with the way that we made, the motion was made?
I'm good.
Okay, all right, are there any other questions or comments regarding this item?
Can you read back the motion? Because there are so many different...
Okay, so Chuck made the motion that we go with for the fiscal year.
No, no, well, actually, it's not the fiscal year, because it starts October 1st to September 30th.
Right, what is that?
For the, for the Network Health.
For the policy year, is what you're looking for?
Yes.
There you go.
Policy year, got it, all right.
So we go with the motion, is there need to be, make an amend, or no? amended? No, okay. So is everybody good?
Mm-hmm.
All right, so any other questions or comments on this item? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. All right, moving down to number two, discussion and possible action on approving the dental insurance plan for 2020, 2021.
And if you don't have any information on this, do you wanna...
They do on their, in their packet, so you'd have to, I'm sorry, you'd have to go to your, we're having some trouble with some printing of some of these documents. You do have the information in your packet, there's a letter, a renewal letter, I'm trying to find it right now to see what pages that was.
16?
16.
16 and 17, that's correct, so, you probably don't have this in front of you, Sarah Beth, if you look at the, the top, it's just the current plan design, and then these, down towards the bottom, the current and the renewal is exactly the same number, it was a 0% increase, they're basically matching the same dental rates that we had last year, and we'll talk about the copays later on, but it's, we, we got this renewal letter, it was a 0% increase, everybody loves Delta Dental, Sarah Beth can talk about Delta Dental, they're a very local, Wisconsin-based company, correct? And everybody that uses Delta Dental is very happy with Delta Dental, so we're staying there, that's our recommendation.
And just to be clear, you guys are what you call in a pooled rate, with them you don't have a choice, it's just the way you are based on the size of your group, so, generally speaking, the worst renewal that I ever see come from Delta in a pooled scenario is an 8% increase, and that means you probably should've gotten like a 50% increase, so, they intentionally keep things very stable, and so they'll oftentimes, even if you're running quite well, they might just give you a 2% increase, and again, it's in an effort to keep things very stable long-term. Obviously, the risk on dental for a carrier is far less than on the medical side, right? So they're able to kind of do that and create that playing field. Nobody went to the dentist in March, April, and May, so, generally speaking, dental plans are running really, really well, so we've seen a lot of this come across, that we're seeing flat renewals for many of our groups this year, which is great to see, so I'm sure you guys are running just like everybody else, and they're giving you a favorable renewal for it.
Minute, Mike?
Yeah, quick, I think I meant to ask you, Nick, didn't Delta Dental give us some kind of rebate because of nobody was going to use their services for those months? Did they give the village a...
Yeah, I'm looking at Chris right now, because she might remember numbers, I'm putting her on the spot, but we did get a, a refund.
I think it was a 50% for one month, one or two months, yeah. I think it was for one month.
They gave you a month?
Yeah. And again, even, I get a lot of people that ask, like, "Okay, well, why aren't they giving us a decrease then if things are running well?" You have to remember that claims are still gonna run like normal, at least most likely next year, so that's what they have to plan for, right? So that's why you're not gonna see decreases even though plans are running well, because they're planning for what's gonna hit next year too.
Any other questions on this item? Seeing none, what is the board's pleasure?
I make a motion to approve Delta Dental for the 2021 policy year.
Got a second?
Second.
Got a motion by Price, and a second by Duffy to approve the dental insurance plan for 2020, 2020 and 2021. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. All right, moving down to number three, discussion and possible action on approving action on the vision insurance plan for 2020, 2021.
Great, and this, you do have another summary that's in front of you, so one of the nice benefits of going back to Network Health is they include a preventive vision exam as part of their health plan, so UHC does not do that. So currently, as you can see, it says on the very top in small, right below Superior Vision, it says voluntary full service. Full service means you have an exam plus the eyewear that's going to have some level of coverage within your plan. So knowing that Network is coming back and they're going to cover the eye exam, it doesn't necessarily make sense to pay for coverage that you're not going to use. So, we were able to also get a materials-only quote from Superior Vision, so it does not cover the eye exam, that's why you see such a huge decrease of almost 30% on that, because it's not covering the eye exam, now that that would be covered by Network Health. You cannot offer both plans, you can only offer one or the other, okay? So we did quote another option, which is VSP, they declined to quote a materials-only plan. Their coverage is honestly, I mean, it's significantly more expensive, you can see, it's almost 60% higher. Generally speaking, although their coverage looks very similar on paper, they have, tend to have a lot more like bells, whistles, and just kind of value behind the scenes that you don't necessarily see here. That being said, I'm not sure it's justifiable to make the jump there, especially when we're trying to, we probably don't need to have the full service, just the materials-only option, so.
And one thing I will add, just as, you know, looking ahead to next year, this VSP plan is something we definitely will be looking at, probably going forward next year, keeping in mind that the employees pay 100% of the vision insurance, so this is something we'll probably talk to the employees about, because they do, they did offer some other plans, VSP did, that, none of them were materials-only, which is why we're going that route this year, but, you know, giving, given that they're maybe a little bit better provider in the area, it's something we'll look at with the employees next year, assuming, and they're paying all the costs anyways, so, we'll give them a, you know, some options next year, it just kind of was, this year just really got away, as far as timing goes, and, and it really, with going to Network, it makes perfect sense, obviously, for us to move to the materials-only.
Any questions or comments on this item? And one thing I will add, just as, you know, looking ahead to next year, this VSP plan is something we definitely will be looking at, probably going forward next year, keeping in mind that the employees pay one hundred percent of the vision insurance. So this is something we'll probably talk to the employees about, because they do, they did offer some other plans, VSP did, that, none of them were materials-only, which is why we're going that route this year, but, you know, given, given that they're maybe a little bit better provider in the area, it's something we'll look at with the employees next year, assuming, and they're paying all the costs anyways, so, we'll give them a, you know, some options next year, it just kind of was, this year just really got away, as far as timing goes, and, and, it really, with going to Network, it makes perfect sense, obviously, for us to move to the materials-only.
Any questions or comments on this item? Seeing none, what is the board's pleasure?
I'll make a motion now, we accept the Superior Vision materials-only proposal.
Well, second, I got a motion by Duffy, second by Sarah to approve the Superior Vision plan for twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one. Any other questions or comments on this item? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? None. Thank you, Sarah, I appreciate it.
You bet.
Thank you.
It's great to see everybody, thank you very much for your time tonight, and as always, if you have questions, don't hesitate to reach out to Nick, and I'm happy to get in touch, thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks, Sarah Beth.
All right, so we're discussing impossible action on approving twenty twenty, twenty-one employee insurance participation fees.
Yes, if you flip to your page nineteen in your board packet, we updated this slightly, starting, I guess, at the top with the network health insurance. We currently, we're not proposing any increase, if you recall, the last couple of years, we've had some pretty significant increases in these because of increases in health insurance premiums. Given this year that our increase is, is so small, six thousand dollars on an annual basis for the village as a whole, remember, that gets split out into utilities and general fund also. We are not proposing any, I am not proposing any health insurance increase for the employees and their monthly contributions. I can, I'll just keep going if-
Yeah, absolutely, man.
Interrupt me, I guess, if you want questions. Delta Dental, again, because it's, it's a, pretty much a flat, Delta Dental, being a flat rate, we're not proposing any increases there, and then Superior Vision, you'll see that's actually a reduction, because like I said, we pay a hundred percent of that as employees, so the, there's a little bit of a cost savings there for the employees, but they're really paying for the plan, so, that is what I'm proposing for this year.
Anybody have any questions or comments, Mike?
I just have a question, I just want to say a question, just a comment, you know, there's a good chance next year, we'll probably be up in the twelve, thirty percent increase. I mean, it doesn't make sense to cushion that increase for the employees going into this, or do we need to tackle that next year? I know there's no guarantee we'll go at that high, you know, but-
Yeah.
That would be the worst-case scenario, but chances are pretty good it will go there, so.
Given the situations we've had the last two years and pretty significant increases, in fact, I think we talked about it a little bit too, that, you know, really didn't, any cost of living increase was absorbed by those increases, and not knowing what next year may bring at this point, I, I appreciate what you're suggesting to not have such a shock next year, but we don't know what next year's gonna bring at this point, like you said, we could run clean again and end up with a zero percent, so I hate to get too far ahead of the, that way, and I think it would be a good, a good time to just leave it as is.
So, Nick, when you talk to employees, I mean, are, are they aware, I mean, since we did have the increases the last couple of years, I mean, are they aware that, I mean, if next year is, if it hits a fan, I mean, there might be a-
Well, I think they're always aware that, you know, I think they were bracing this year, we were told last year when we got there, forty-five and twenty-five percent renewals, if you remember, Network came in at a forty-five percent renewal last year, twenty-five is what we took, and I think Sarah Beth at that time said, you know, maybe expect another one next year, double-digit, and thankfully, we're not there. So I think, employees are obviously aware that if we see huge increases, there's always a possibility that, you know, we're gonna have to increase their share of it, but at this point, we haven't concentrated on next year at this, I mean, right now, we're just, we're getting, taking care of this year. We literally got these renewals, you know, the final numbers on Monday or Tuesday of last week, so, I've got a lot of time.
Okay.
We have a, a meeting with the employees at the latest on September sixteenth, depending, because we approved the insurance tonight, I didn't know if we were gonna get to that tonight because of the timing. We may move that up a little bit, but, so that's when we usually take and, and meet, and explain everything with, with the coverages, so.
Okay. Anybody else have any comments or questions regarding this item? All right, seeing none, what is the board's pleasure?
I'll make a motion to continue with the existing rates for the employees.
I get a second?
I'll second that motion.
Got a motion by Horning, second by Price to continue with the existing rates for the employee insurance participation fees. Any other questions or comments regarding this item?
Question, are we doing all three or just insurance right now? We're doing three separate or all three?
All three.
I was making the motion for all three.
Okay, then to say to keep the rates, I know there's a deduction in the-
Right.
In the vision, so I don't want to say that we're gonna keep it the same, because then it would be inaccurate, because there's a decrease for vision.
That's a voluntary material, but I can change that to just say the health and dental, so that's a good point, John, okay.
So you amend your motion?
Yes, just for the health and dental.
Okay, do you want to second that?
I'll second that.
Okay, so we have amendment to the original motion just for the health and dental? All right, so, by Horning, and then second by Price, so any other questions on this item? All right, seeing none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? None.
Just a question, Nick, do we have to approve the Superior Vision then as?
That's really, no, no, it's part of the benefit booklet that will get, you know, we, we do adopt a benefit booklet, and you're correct, that is a voluntary plan that they do not have to sign up for, so they're made aware that if they sign up for it, they pay it.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, thank you.
All right. All right, moving down to discussion and possible action on twenty twenty-one county, Fond du Lac County tax collection agreement.
Yes, this is, we do this every year, so the Fond du Lac County does all of our tax collecting, which saves a ton of time and frustrations at our front desk, and I'll, you know, it just, we, it saves a lot of traffic, and it's, it's a bargain. And every year, they usually go up a nickel, and it, once it goes up a nickel, if you look down on fir, on page twenty of your packet, it says settlement procedures, and the, the A there, it's two dollars and twenty cents per parcel, it was two dollars and fifteen cents last year, it was two dollars and ten cents the year before, still a bargain in our eyes, and well worth it, so, just looking to approve that tonight.
Anybody have any questions or comments regarding this item? All right, seeing none, what is the board's pleasure?
Make a motion to approve the tax collection agreement with the Village Church Fond du Lac and Fond du Lac County.
You got a second?
Second.
There we go, a motion by Will, second by Duffy to approve the twenty twenty-one Fond du Lac County tax collection agreement. Any other questions or comments on this item? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? None. Number six, discussion and possible action on awarding bid for Indiana Avenue Detention Basin improvements.
I'll have, I'll take that tonight, if you recall, we got, we received a grant a couple of years ago, so, moving back from Indiana Avenue, when we did Indiana Avenue down by the Village Garage, that construction project, as part of that construction project, we added some stormwater that was, there's a pond down there, a stormwater pond, right on Indiana, on that same block on the east side. We added a little bit of water from that project, because of the way it was, the ditches and that were working, so some water from that project ends up going into that pond. As part of that process, they said this pond is in due, is in need of cleaning. All of our stormwater ponds, eventually, they're, they're designed to catch sediment, the sediment comes out of the water, collects on the bottom of the pond, so at some point, you gotta clean that sediment off, and that one is past due. So that was kind of part of their negotiating, I'll, I'll say, I guess, as part of the permit for that, they said, yes, you need to clean this soon. At the same time, we applied for a grant, and we did receive the grant, and this is going back a few years, there's been some hiccups along the way with this project and finding a few contaminants in the soils underneath, however, we've, we've worked around that and gotten through it, but in the three years, the project costs have gone up a little bit, so, what originally was planned to be a hundred thousand dollars with the engineering and everything, we applied for the grant, it's a fifty-fifty match, we got fifty thousand dollars of a grant, is now, you know, a hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars for the project, plus some engineering. So, this project is going to be over budget, it's in the stormwater utility, we have a pretty healthy fund reserve in the stormwater utility. We also, if need be, at some point, we have not ever done a borrow on our stormwater utility, we can always go there if we need to. I guess, at the end of the day, we, our, this grant is, is, is ending at the end of this year. So we need to, we need to get this project done to get the grant dollars, either way, we're still saving the fifty thousand dollars. We are also in contact with the DNR, there's a chance that some of these projects, when they're funded, that are expiring, if they don't get their projects done, there's a possibility that there'll be some money left over, and if that is the case, they're allowing us to apply for those funds to match our fifty percent, so we may be able to get some more money. But at the end of the day, you can see the bid tab, there's, there was definitely a good, a wide range of bids. So, this, this one being by cross-excavating, confident in their work, and we're recommending approval of this project for, and they would be starting this fall/winter timeframe, to get it done by the end of the year.
Cool. Anybody have any questions or comments on this item? For Nick? Uh, John?
Nick, so, basically, you had fifty thousand already allocated, that's there, so you're really looking for the twenty-four thousand and somewhat change in addition to?
Yes, and, yes, but there's also engineering costs, that, you know, we have an engineer that had to do all the design work and all that, so it's, it's more like, maybe, I think it's like another thirty or forty, thirty thousand dollars on top of the one twenty-four for the engineering cost. So it, it's, it's, it's a significant increase, it's like one seventy-ish total cost, so we're gonna take the fifty off of that, so, but regardless, you know, it's still saving the fifty thousand dollars, the cost is what the cost would be, it's just the budget doesn't reflect that.
Okay.
Mike?
A little bitter with that de-watering and flow management fees, did he miss something?
Yeah, we're, we're not sure that's-
I mean, are you gonna come back and say that, you know, that, I mean, I know it's a bid to bid, but sometimes if they, they can prove they made a mistake, I mean, it's a-
Yep, and we haven't heard that yet, they, you know, we, we, I would have thought we had been contacted by now, we, there, you see that is all over the, the plan with those numbers, yeah. And I think, the difference being that, I think some of the other contractors were using a subcontractor to do that. We, I know that for a fact, some were using subcontractors to do the de-watering, and, you know, it doesn't have to necessarily be that complicated, but their bid is their bid at this point, unless they prove, yeah, that they've done something wrong, but we have not heard that at this point, so.
Thank you.
Chuck?
Nick, with the approval of a bid, when would the work actually get done then?
This, this fall.
This fall, yeah.
It, it's, it's a weather-dependent type project, obviously, so they'd wait, generally, these type of projects, they're gonna wait till, you know, November, when the rain subsides and the snow starts and we're gonna do it.
Okay.
Because what would be the risk if we didn't do this, other than the-
Well, there's two risks, there's one thing that DNR telling us we have to get this done, and the second one being if we don't do it, we're kind of rolling the dice if we would get another grant. Right now, if we don't do it this year, our grant money expires, we won't have it, so it'll be fifty thousand dollars more-
Okay.
For the village.
Okay.
Is that?
Sort of, but I guess, it's the, the DNR came in, came in and said we had to do it, and they, I mean, did they follow up and they make sure? What's the risk there, I guess, if it's not?
Well, it, 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 I don't know if they would ever get to the point of fining us or anything, but we are probably two years behind, just because of these hiccups we had, they, I mean, they wanted us to do this back in two thousand and eighteen. And it should, it should be done, it definitely needs to be done. The, the problem is if we wait, I don't, I think it's just gonna go up and fall off.
What is it, I guess, why do you have to clean it out?
So, these ponds, all these ponds are designed, with, all these stormwater ponds you see all over the place, they're, they're, there's two different main types of pond, but in our case, we have generally the same, so there's four to six feet deep ponds. There's generally three to four feet of water in there, all the time, when it rains, it might be six, eight feet deep. What it does is it slows that water down, okay, all this water goes in the pond, it stops and sits there for a while, and as it sits there, all the sediment and water drops out, little pieces of dirt that carries phosphorus and everything else, and it settles at the bottom of the pond, over time, the bot, the pond is no longer four feet deep, now it's only two feet deep, and because it's only two feet deep, it can only hold that much water now, which takes away its effectiveness.
Okay.
So, at some point, you have to go back to where it originally started and get all that sediment out of there.
To clean it out is to make it so that it works again?
Correct.
Make it as deep, not necessarily cleaning, I guess it's more digging it out then?
It's exactly what, yeah, you're, so it's actually draining the pond, so you get down to the bottom, and you're basically taking an excavator and digging that material out of there and letting it de-water and-
So there's flood risk, I guess, if we didn't do it, is that?
No, there's, not necessarily flood risk, there's, it's water quality risk, and that's why the DNR cares.
Okay.
Because we're, you know, we're mandated by the state with our stormwater utility, and as for us being under the state's guidelines, we have to take care of our stormwater.
Okay, and when we did the capital budget, we had it in here at fifty thousand dollars?
Correct.
Last year, okay.
Yep. And that's, so that was budgeted in the stormwater utility budget, the capital is, does have some of those utility projects, but yes, it was budgeted as a fifty thousand dollar expense.
Okay, thank you.
So, and Nick, is there a liner in it, or is it just?
It's, so we're fortunate where we live, is, if you've ever dug a hole deeper than the topsoil around here, it's red clay, which is what they use for pond liners.
Okay.
So, we, fortunately, when we dig a pond, we have our liner in place.
And how long will this be good for then, is there?
Eight to fifteen years, I would say, and there's, we have other ponds, this is, this is gonna become the new cycle of stormwater utilities, right? Because everybody kind of started back in oh-seven, oh-six, and we're getting to that point now, we're thirteen years in, that, you know, everybody in the state mandated it. So now, this is gonna be the next big expense for all these utilities, is cleaning out, maintaining these ponds, they don't just take care of themselves.
Okay. All righty, any other questions or comments regarding this item?
Do we have anything in the long-range thing then, for the rest of those ponds?
Yep, in our, in our, yes, in our spreadsheets, we do.
Okay. More than five years out, though?
Yes, we have, most of our, our capital projects, you see, is, we have a five-year plan, but for a lot of, like, our street and overlays and that, we go out ten years, a lot of things, yeah.
Okay.
All right, any other questions? What is the board's pleasure on this item?
I'll make a motion to approve cross-excavating for the Indiana Avenue Detention Basin excavating.
Got a second?
I'll second that motion.
Got a motion by Horning and a second by Price to, what was the name of that again?
Cross.
Cross. To approve cross-excavating for the Indiana project. Any other questions or comments on this item? All right, seeing none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? None. All right, moving down to number seven, discussion and possible action on twenty twenty-one police, fire, and EMS budgets.
All right, I will turn most of this over to the department heads to present their budgets. So, I, just for, for kind of discussion purposes at this point, what we put in all of, as we're going through the budgets, what we put in for the wage increase for cost of living at this point, for all budgets, is one and a half percent. Now, we're not through negotiations with some of the unions, but for discussion purposes, and for what's in the budget at this point, it's at one and a half percent, with some, few exceptions, if there's some wage scales that are maybe being negotiated, but for the most part, everything is one and a half percent, and I'll just, you know, that's where we'll start with, we're still working through negotiations for both of these budgets, two of the three, I should say, well, I guess all three. So, that's where we're at with that, and with that, I will turn it over to Darren for the police department budget.
All right. Darren?
Thank you. I'm not sure exactly how you guys prefer to do this, you just want me to go through this thing line by line, or just answer questions that you might have, or?
What is the board's pleasure, are you guys wanna?
I think you should maybe hit the highlights, and then maybe you come back and do a question.
Just go page by page, and just the highlights on each page, and then, sort of any questions, and we'll-
So I think, when you talk about the highlights, I think what I'm gonna do is, starting on the first page that shows the entire budget, I'll just point out the twenty twenty estimated actuals versus what was budgeted for twenty twenty, and then the twenty twenty-one request, if that's what everybody, all right. So, full-time wages, the twenty twenty budget amount was seven hundred ninety-six thousand one oh-nine, our estimated actual is actually two columns over, six hundred and seventy-six thousand six hundred and thirty, that's by virtue of not having gotten up to full staff as quickly as we had hoped, due largely to the COVID pandemic and really not having an opportunity to do hiring, so. With that said, our twenty twenty-one budget request is, at this time, is eight hundred and eighteen thousand four hundred and seventy-one, and then, if you look at the last column, it's a two-point-eight percent increase over this year's budget amount. Drop down to overtime, again, there, we're looking at an estimated actual of fifty-six thou, I'm sorry, I'm looking at the wrong one, sixty-two thousand, ten thousand dollars less than was budgeted, and again, a lot of those savings are because of the COVID situation, a lot of things that normally would have happened, didn't. So, next year's request is right at exactly what this year's request is, seventy-two thousand.
Just made a comment on that, it was a heck of a decrease from two thousand and nineteen, I mean, you guys worked a lot of hours, I mean, your crew did, so, good for them and good for you to have some extra staffing this last year.
That's why we've been trying so hard to get up to staff, it's a lot of overtime, it's a lot of hours on people, so.
Fifty, almost sixty, fifty.
I think I'm gonna drop down now, I'm gonna skip the retirement and insurance, because I really don't have any control over those things, I always come from HR. So I'm gonna drop all the way down then to- Um, so, I'm gonna drop all the way down then to, um, probably the three hundred accounts. Well, you know what, I'll talk about two oh-seven real quickly. Um, two oh-seven, our medical, um, you can see there, the twenty-twenty budget was eighteen sixty, or eighteen eighty-five. Our estimated actual is twenty-seven oh-three. Um, so we are a little bit over that this year. Um, a big portion of that is because we had to run two additional hiring processes that we weren't counting on. One, because somebody didn't make it through field training, and one, because, uh, if you remember, we had an individual that had accepted an offer, was set to start with us, and the day before he was supposed to come, he called and backed out because of COVID, and he was afraid to switch jobs at the time. Um, so, Nick and I have talked about it, um, when it comes time to, uh, ask the state and the feds for help reimbursement, we're gonna see if that expense would be eligible for, uh, reimbursement because we lost somebody due to the pandemic, so. Uh, from there, dropping down, um-
We gotta just pause right there real quick, there, I'll, I'll hit IT, um, before you get too far down.
Yep.
Two-thirty-five. Um, there's a large discrepancy there this year. Um, there's a couple of reasons for that. If you recall, last year, we were supposed to replace a server last year, and it got pushed into this year, and we expected that to happen, and we talked about that last year during the budget. But it was too late, and again, we didn't add it in there, cause it was budgeted last year. The second thing that's a big change there is that, if you recall, we put a fiber optic, um, line to this building because of our police department, basically, because they were having issues transmitting to the county. We also needed to segregate that traffic. So, what was a, you know, sixty-dollar expense a month for the police department for, for charter, uh, their cable, it went up to like four hundred and thirty dollars a month. So that's what it'll be now, moving forward, um, for that, so that's where you see that huge, huge change. Along with, there's some PC upgrades, um, happened this year and next year, it'll be a few more, so. You can see it does tone back down a little bit next year, though.
Alright, um, I will very quickly talk about, uh, three oh-one general office, because if you're just looking at the percent changes, it looks rather large, fourteen-point-nine percent. Um, but you'll see that's a hundred and seventy-five dollars, so it's really a small account anyhow, um, it's not a lot of money. Continuing down the page, uh, telephone, um, Nick will probably let you address that one again.
Yeah, that's just, I mean, we just kinda averaged, it, it went down slightly. I mean, we just average those out every year. We did save a little money at Verizon. We went back to Verizon this year for the cell phones and changed the plan a little bit. We always gotta tweak those plans, um, depending on the user's usage of data. Um, so, we tweaked those plans a little bit. We did save a little money towards the second half of the year on those plans, but, um, again, that, that's not too out of line.
Alright, uh, again, trying to just stick with the highlights, um, you'll see that there's no change proposed for, um, training and conferences or travel mileage. You'll also see that, uh, almost nothing is being spent out of those accounts this year, um, again, because of the COVID pandemic. Uh, a lot of training opportunities just, uh, went away. Um, nobody's doing anything in person, and obviously, you can't simulate driving squad cars and things like that, so. Next year, we're, um, leaving the requests the same, hopeful, hoping that things are back to normal next year. Still going down, um, you'll see that, uh, the uniform account, um, we are proposing, uh, a very, 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 very slight, uh, decrease to that. And again, our, our actual expenses this year are a little bit lower than, uh, anticipated. Materials, uh, there's a two hundred and fifty-dollar decrease there. Uh, that is because, um, I think I had mentioned this during the capital budget presentation. Uh, I discovered that I can get training cartridges for our tasers reimbursed from state funds, um, so I don't need to put that money in the budget anymore. Our fuel account, um, we budgeted fifteen-five-fifty. We're looking, we're thinking it's probably gonna come up around, uh, twelve thousand three hundred this year. Um, but next year, I'm proposing just leaving it exactly what it was this year, fifteen-five-fifty. Um, small tools, uh, that one, we gotta talk a little bit about. Um, so our budget amount was, um, fifty-three, fifty-three-fifty. Um, if you look at the current amount, it says eighty-nine forty-seven, and then the estimated actual says forty-nine fifty-seven. Um, we purchased that, uh, another, uh, solar flashing traffic sign, uh, that was part of a grant that we were awarded, and we actually received that reimbursement today, so that's why there's that four thousand dollar difference there, cause we, we spent it, but we got it from the state, so. Maintenance and repair of vehicles, uh, our twenty-twenty budget is sixty-one fifty, our estimated actual is forty-nine seventy-six. And you'll see that, uh, next year, I'm requesting a little bit less than we did for this year, uh, going back and looking at our last three years, um, since getting everything converted over to the SUVs, um, things are going pretty well right now. Um, we aren't putting a lot of, uh, maintenance, uh, into those vehicles. Um, they seem to be holding up better than the previous vehicles did. Um, and, uh, we're hoping that we're gonna be able to continue that run.
Does with the public works mechanic help offset that a little bit too?
Oh, yeah, absolutely, yeah. Using him, uh, it certainly helps us save some money, uh, because basically, we're only paying him. The police department is only paying for materials and then the labor pool allocation, so, whereas if we were going somewhere else, we're paying labor costs in addition to that, so.
Just to make sure you get some credit for it, so.
Yep. Um, scrolling down, uh, you'll see a little bit of an increase from our budget for twenty-twenty, um, to twenty-twenty-one in maintenance and repair of office equipment. Um, that's actually kind of a lease program, so to speak, or a contract. Um, and we just underestimated what we're gonna need this year, so next year, we're, um, kind of getting that back up to a little bit more realistic level, I guess. Really, I think that's about it for highlights, unless, you know, you guys have any specific questions?
Any questions from this page for Darren?
I have a question. I guess, do you think you have any room to come down on your travel? It looks like travel, you spent thirteen hundred dollars in twenty-nineteen. We haven't spent a lot this year, and we're still at twenty-two next year. Do you think that that may be a little bit high?
I'm hoping not, um, and here's why. What you're seeing, um, you know, you mentioned twenty-nineteen.
Yeah.
We were significantly short-staffed, um, so we had fewer people to send to training, so that's part of why that was so low. In twenty-twenty, it's mostly due to the fact that we can't go anywhere because of COVID. We're hoping to be up to staff by the end of this year, so, and hoping that next year, things are back to normal. We should be back up to the budgeted area of the, that, that expenditure, that twenty-two hundred dollar range.
Okay.
If that makes sense.
Sure, and that's why you, I guess, kept training conferences high as well?
That's correct, yep.
Mike?
I think one-twelve, that general employee dis, what, what, what is that? I just, I'm sure probably has that one-
Disability.
Disability, okay, alright.
Short and long, Chris is here tonight. I didn't introduce her earlier, everyone knows Chris, but Chris is, Chris will be at most of the budget meetings to answer. She does all those numbers.
One question is, I mean, we've talked about before, that co-pay for the health insurance, that comes out of a different, but is it, is that charged back to that department? Or that's just more of an over, all-advantaged expense for the village?
I'll let Chris answer that. You're talking about the, the, the deductible payment?
The core insurance deductible paying, the village pays a good portion.
For any of the expenses for the benefits, what's in the budget is what the cost of the village is. So, let's say the health insurance premium, let's just say it's fifteen hundred dollars, but for the village, it's the fifteen hundred minus the one-eighty participation fee, let's say for a family. So, the only thing that's in the budget is what's actually the village expense. The co-pays don't have anything to do with it.
I think what he, what you're asking is the deductible portion of the health insurance.
Well, the deductible is all in the financial, one hundred five one five one zero, one sixteen, that will come up when we do the administration budget. I'm sorry, I misunderstood.
But doesn't, it doesn't get poured back into the, each department?
No, cause it's so, except for utilities.
Utilities, yes.
Yeah, so those get divvied up, yep. But the general fund is general fund, so we don't take the time to split up the deductible based on where it was used.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions or comments on this page?
If I could, one other thing for, um, and, uh, when you asked about the training and the travel mileage, um, I talked about the state, um, allowing, allocating funds for training purposes, and that I figured out that I could actually, uh, get reimbursed for the training cartridges out of the, that money. We also spend that money on, that, that comes from, so, the amount, the, the dollar amounts that you see that I asked for from the village is basically above and beyond what we are going to spend from the state level, the state reimbursement, so, um, not everything that you see. How am I trying to say this? We're doing more than what's seen in this budget, it, it does, if that makes sense, so.
Anything else on this page?
I just make a comment, I, it, just think, I thought maybe that it would come up, uh, after I'm looking at this. Two-point-eight percent is what it shows for an increase in the wages, and I told you earlier, it's a one-point-five percent increase, but there are still step increases for people, depending on what year they are. That's why you're not seeing a flat one-point-five there.
Are we approving these tonight?
No, no, we don't, we won't approve any budgets, um, as we, and I said it when we talked about capital, maybe I'll say it again. We'll just go through all these budgets. Obviously, if there's questions, concerns, things we want changed, this is the time to ask them. However, once we get to the, the final meeting before the adoption, which is like the first meeting in November, I don't know the date off the top of my head, it's probably right in front of your budget booklet still. November second would be the, the, uh, total, at that point, we would, if there's any outstanding questions on any of these budgets, that we would review, do like a once-over review of all of the budgets at that point, and if there's anything outstanding, we'll hopefully get it tied up by then, but, yeah. We're not approving anything tonight. I always put that on there in case there's decisions made about certain things through these budgets, but it's not necessarily a decision tonight.
Nick, I just wanted to clarify that too. As we're going through, and I'm looking at percentage increase and looking at all the departments' increase, and how does that impact what the levy's going to be?
Right.
Comes into play, what that bottom number is, because potentially, we would have to visit, looking at, well, that's too high, or-
Right.
Something like that.
So, and that's kinda what, and I'll just say it again, I, so we'll go through this whole budget, right, and we'll get to the end, and we'll, we'll know where our levy's at at that point. We'll know where our revenues are gonna be at at that point, and it, it's either gonna be, yes, it works, or no, it doesn't work. And at that point, if it's a small, small stuff we need to take care of internally, we can make some changes and take care of it. But it's, it, it's, it's really, really short timeframe when we actually have all those numbers to, to start there, and then get the budget done before we have to adopt it. Just doesn't work timing-wise as, as well, I believe, as the way we do it now. So, you have a good understanding at this point. When we get to that point, you're gonna have a good understanding of what's in these budgets. And you know, you know, the police department had a three percent increase overall, or whatever the case may be. And at that point, that's when, okay, we gotta make some cuts, and we'll go back to the, the staff, and at that point, we'll have a better idea of where we need to look. Does that make sense?
Yep.
So, yeah, we're not making decisions right now, but, but by all means, if there's things you don't agree with in these budgets, or you, you know, good questions, ask them now, and we can start working on them, though.
Alright, if there's nothing else on this page, we'll move on to page two. Fire department.
Thank you. Um, I'll do the same thing Darren did, uh, but I'm gonna try to breeze through the, the, uh, fire accounts, uh, somewhat quickly. Um, so, full-time wages is essentially me and then our deputy clerk, uh, which is Lori. Uh, part-time wages is staying the same for next year. Volunteer, over the last three years, has been, uh, overspent compared to what we budgeted for, so we're looking to increase that, um, just over two thousand dollars. Uh, we've seen kind of an average right around the ten-two-fifty. Um, and that's strictly, uh, our volunteer pan-on-call guys coming in for fire responses, so in the detail, uh, compared to last year, we changed it from an eighty calls per year to a hundred, because our call volume has gone up, um, so we're gonna reflect that as so. Overtime is pretty much staying the same. It's pretty close, uh, and as you can see, we're projecting to be underneath, uh, this year on what we budgeted.
Now Jake, explain how overtime happens in the fire department.
I don't know why it says labor pool in there, in the line.
Just how the overtime actually-
Yeah, so, the overtime's only when a full-time person comes in for like a fire incident or fire training. That gets moved from, you know, an EMS, uh, account to the fire budget. That makes sense.
It's just the six full-time people that cover the ambulance, five-hundred service, when they get called in on a fire call outside of their normal work hours, they get charged overtime in the fire department.
No, it's overtime also.
Excludes myself. I don't get paid.
And on the ambulance, you have a medic, cause you have one medic per, someone calls an A chef, they call in, you need a medic, do you have to call in overtime then, or are you able to staff that?
But that's the EMS budget.
Yeah, that'll go on, yeah.
This is just, it's, it's, it's always confused me how we get overtime in the fire budget, and that's why I just had to explain it.
Okay, thank you.
It's a three-point-five percent increase on the full-time wages, so are you and Lori in this type process?
Correct, yep. Uh, no, I just, I am. So, next year's a two percent in the step, and then the one and a half. Wage reimbursement, I get that, uh, along with the next seven or eight accounts from Chris.
So I guess if there's any questions from basically wage reimbursement, all the way down to-
Life insurance.
Medical, um, life insurance.
Yeah, cause I'll talk about longevity. Um, twenty-nineteen was a little higher, and we had a, a couple of guys that were twenty-five-plus retired. So that's gone down a little bit. The medical expense, there hasn't been a number in there for quite a few years, and that's a, a negotiation that Nick and I are working through with the union on getting, uh, full-time staff physicals, uh, each year. For, and as it sounds, as it would be coming from EMS, it's more of a, a fire department function, ensuring that the employees don't have, uh, cancer or, and are healthy, and, um, it's a little bit further than what our regular medical assessment, uh, is when you go in to get a physical from your doctor based off of our health insurance.
With that said, do you have then like a no tobacco sheet that you're signing then, because if we're covering all this insurance, it's all part of that policy stuff?
Yeah, it's actually a department, uh, policy, and I believe the village has it as well, and the personnel policy.
Well, for use on premise, yeah.
Yeah.
How often do you require the employees?
What's that?
A one-time deal, or?
Yeah, once they sign it, they say that they understand the, the policies and guidelines.
I guess, what are you asking? You talking about a physical?
Fifteen hundred dollars, I'm talking about the medical.
Oh, yep.
Isn't that for the physicals and all that stuff? Are you, you have to read it here, one-time deal?
Yes, no, it's-
It's a schedule.
Yeah, it's a schedule, and once we can sit behind closed doors and talk about their, what they're asking for, I guess I'll be able to explain it more in depth.
I can take IT. Before we move on, though, was there any questions of, I had a-
Health, health insurance?
Yeah, so, the health insurance, like, um, obviously, there's a huge increase there. All that means is probably somebody changed plans. Maybe went from a single to a family, or a single to a, you know, there's no control over what we, we can't control what plans they're taking. Good question. Um, is there any other question on that?
Yeah, and that, if Jake and Lori are the only one for fire, or there are others, let me ask that first. You know, because you said you're the full-time for insurance, and then if the insurance went up, is there more on that side that get it than those two?
No.
Just those two then?
Right, so you can see it's a very small number for insurance purposes.
Right.
And we're talking twenty-eight hundred dollars.
So there's a change in thing, because going up almost a hundred percent, like you said, it'd be a change in a family's-
Which is a small, small change.
Correct, looks like a big percentage, but a small one. Okay, thank you.
Sure. Um, then I'll skip down to IT network if we're, we're good up, okay. IT again, um, this one has been a struggle to, to budget over the last few years with all this stuff being replaced, so we're gonna overspend that, uh, this year by quite a bit, um, but again, next year, because it, mainly because of the server. Um, next year, we're going back down to what I believe is going to be a more accurate number than moving forward, so. It's taken a few, couple of years to get that number dialed in with the, with RMM and that, uh, new, new ways of doing things, so.
Uh, safety testing this year was underspent quite a bit. As you can see, um, we have certain tests that have to be done every year, and some tests that are done, uh, every other year. tests that have to be done every year, and some tests that are done every other year, and some every third year, and then some every fifth year, actually. So 2019, it was overspent a little bit, and this year will be underspent, and then next year, we should be right back at that 40, $500 range. General offices and changing, printing and is depleted. Postage is down. Community relations, that's a October expense typically, and we're still making purchases for the school this year, so that is why the estimated is there. Unfortunately, I don't think we'll be going into the schools, but we'll have the ability to drop off materials. Telephone comes from Nick as well, between the jetpacks and our ambulances.
Got much to talk about there.
Dues and subscriptions is going down a little bit compared to the previous years. A lot of that has to do with the amount that we spend on the State of Wisconsin Fire Association and how many people we have. So that's kind of how that number fluctuates. Training and conferences is going down, like Chief Pouch had said, this year, both fire and EMS are way underspent because we weren't able to go to planned trainings, and I don't foresee us being able to go to all of the planned trainings that we are shooting for, so that's why that number is going down for next year.
Jake, are they offering a lot of that stuff online now, or like Zoom and all that, or no?
Uh, not really, because a lot of our stuff's all practical. So you have to be able to do both, you know, so unfortunately, they're, they're not, a lot of admin quote-unquote things are going to Zoom, where they're offering a lot of free conferences and seminars and whatnot. But as far as training goes, that stuff, you all have to be in person for. Go down to uniforms, I took a little bit out of, I still am projecting that we're going to hit the budgeted amount. Typically, we wait until close to the end of the year when we start needing winter clothing, and then we'll make that purchase then, or soon, I should say, because we're getting to that point now this year. Awards and recognition, over the last few years, we've been spending just under 1,500, so that dropped $500. And the trend's kind of been the last three, four years now, right around that dollar amount. Sundry's staying the same. Materials is going up a little bit. In my detail, I added Milwaukee Tools. Our DeWalt tools that we're using right now are having a lot of issues, and we're not able to get batteries for anymore. We're running the same thing with our Cots, so we're going to make a switch to Milwaukee. Their tools seem to have more of a standard battery, and it's across the board, and they haven't made very many changes. So that's the, the change in that budget. Fuels and Luberkens, 2019 was a high year, and Nick and I believe it's because there may have been some EMS receipts coded into, into the fire budget. So we're.
We'll clean up.
Yeah, we're typically around the 1,000 to 1,500 mark. So that's why that's going down a little bit to the $2,000 mark. Small tools and equipment, you can see that's significantly overspent right now. We took in right around $4,800 from the association that paid for nozzles. So that budget's actually doing halfway decent right now with the addition next year of some money for, what's not added in this detail is a negative pressure fan next to the appliances section. It's a $1,000 roughly purchase. I think they're $960. And ours are significantly outdated. One was purchased when, actually, both of them were purchased with the old 503, which would have been in 1996. So I plan on leaving that number the same the next two years, so we can get two new fans on both the engines. Safety equipment is going down a little bit just based off kind of what we've spent. 2019 was a little elevated because we got a good deal on some turnout gear that was left over from the previous year, that Five Alarm wanted to get rid of. Maintenance, repair, communication staying the same, equipment staying the same, and then the water.
Anybody have any questions on this page before we move on?
I have a question. Do you think the Milwaukee Tools move down to small tools and equipment from material?
Yeah, I can, I can, yeah, I can move it down there. We just, for some reason, we had our DeWalt stuff in materials, that's why I just put it there when we last got them. But I'll, I can put them down into 316.
That should be, that's a good point.
That makes sense.
And then the sweatshirts, I guess, and uniforms, $1,000 worth of sweatshirts. Can you tell me a little bit about that?
Yeah, they're not necessarily a sweatshirt, more so than a jacket.
Do we buy those every year?
No, typically, it's like three to five, depending on use.
How many people are on the fire department?
Twenty-six.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep. Yeah, yep.
Any other questions?
Not necessarily percentage, as we've talked, like, we always try to keep it as flat as possible, but as, you know, the directions were to, the guidance was to provide the same level of service that we provided in the past. You know, a lot of these, especially these budgets, it's, it's personnel is in, you know, lion's share of their budgets, and it's really, once you do the, you know, Chris puts the calculations into the wage calc, that sets a lot of their budget costs. No, the direction was, was to provide the same level of service, and keeping in mind that we were nervous about next year's shared revenue or the year after, which I don't know if anybody else had seen this, but I'm bringing it up right now. I got an email from the league after 4:30 today when I wasn't here on my phone, and I briefly read it, and it said that the state's sales tax revenue is meeting, it's above exceeding the projection. So what's, what's they once thought was going to be, sales tax was going to be drastically cut in the state, you know, as a whole for the 20, it was, their fiscal year runs June to June, but, so their, their projection is actually exceeds that by quite a lot. And so that's good news for us, for the shared revenue. And that doesn't necessarily mean our shared revenue is not going to see any change to it, but because of the sales revenue, which is where the shared revenue comes from, is exceeding their projection. So that's good news. Just got it this afternoon.
I know, Jake, we don't worry about the employees that are not working paying in state wages, I mean, state taxes.
I don't follow, yeah.
Sales taxes, except for employees that are not working, cannot find it, they're not working paying in, good enough for the state taxes. You understand?
Yes, but, but I think that shared revenue is mostly from sales taxes. Not wage taxes.
Ann, did you have something?
Yeah, I guess Darren, could you just provide a little bit more detail, maybe next time, or aside from this, on your travel and mileage, who's going where, and how long they're going to go, and where that is? Just because it's just one sort of number, and maybe if we could get a little more granularity on that?
Yeah, I actually have that in front of me if you want to. I mean.
Could you just?
I don't have it in the, well, I'm sorry.
Do you have it in an email form?
I, well, I could.
Yeah, that'd be good.
Okay.
Thank you.
And you know, that partially could be my fault too, Darren, if you probably gave me the data, and I maybe didn't enter it into the budget first.
No, I didn't, Nick. I, I wouldn't, the detail that I present is just broken down by sworn staff, not sworn staff, that, so, but what you're looking for is this page, so, yeah, I can get you that information.
He's got the details, trust me.
No, I know, we, sometimes we just tend to use the same dollar amount year after year, and don't necessarily look at the details and see where we think people are going to go. So it's just always a good idea to look at some details on that.
Take some of the details out of his budget.
So any other questions on police and fire? All right. So you're done, moving down to EMS?
Yeah, I'll start with the, the revenues. After the discussion at the last meeting that we had pertaining to the ambulance service, we put in here a $3 increase in the per capita. And obviously, that's a decision that you guys can make on whether or not you want to keep it there, but that's where Nick and I put it for this discussion. So that is in there. The ambulance fees, as you can see, are projected to be at 871, 490, and next year's budget's 825. And that's essentially to make sure that we're not going to over-budget that account and make sure we hit those revenue marks as we should.
Just if you'd pause for one second.
Yep.
Jake, if we go back up, I just want to point out a couple of things. First of all, the Fond du Lac County ambulance, that's a subsidy we get from the county. There was, if you look at the current actual, it says 52,000. There was something coded wrong there. The actual will be 42,374. That is set in stone. Also, on a plus side, we are getting a 5% increase from the county. We did get that confirmation maybe a month ago from, from Mr. Beagle. And then secondly, the same thing you'll see in the town ambulance, there was another revenue stream coded to the wrong account in there that we're cleaning up, but, so that will be 157. That's strictly based on population, obviously, so. And then I just wanted to point those two things out.
The other thing that I don't believe is in here is the CARES Act, and they're doing another round for us. We can take a maximum of 2% of our gross revenue from the federal government, so there should be an added $6,300, $6,394, $67, that gets put into our budget as revenue for this year. I'll be doing some paperwork on Wednesday to finalize the, the last of it, which will be $1,700 roughly. That'll be going in as revenue. I'm not, I haven't heard how long that's going to go, so I'm not sure if that stops 2020, or if there's going to be opportunities the following, 2021, so. Full-time wages, yep, yep.
Just a question. Use of village reserve, 34,800. I thought we had that discussion that, you know, we were going to look at, you know, when we went through the audit, that we weren't going to use village reserve funds.
That, that's not village reserve. So what, and we, yeah, we skipped over that. So what that is, is there's capital, 34,8 is the amount of capital. We, we had to put that revenue, you'll see when we get down later. Their capital purchases as part of the capital plan we presented is 34,8.
Okay.
They're, they show that as an expense. We show that as an expense as we get lower, so we had to offset it with that revenue because it's a borrow. Does that make sense? So it says use of village reserve, but it's really proceeds from debt.
Label that to somehow to capital, so it ties into that it's part of the capital part of it.
It, I think it actually says.
Does it later?
The detail. No, it, it, on the front page, it's definitely deceiving. So if you look on the detail for that account, John, it says village reserves, it actually says borrow proceeds in the.
Okay.
That's, that's what that's showing.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
Can I ask a question?
Yep.
Um, just ambulance fees, we're at 422 for the year. Is that through?
June.
July? That's through June?
Correct.
Okay.
The journal entries for the ambulance fee?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
And that will be the same for the uncollectible, which is 334, just so you're aware. That's through June as well. Full-time wages, like we had previously said in the fire department, is one and a half percent overall, which turns into three with step increases, because we, I think all of our full-time staff right now is on step increases. Part-time wages is going up, and I base that off of what's in the detail, which is seven 24-hour shifts, and then EMS training as well. And then our admin assistant is in there too. That is based off of the, the pay scale that has been asked for by the union. So there's a little bit of an increase with part-time wages in the aspect that it would match with the overall averages for a start to a one-year EMT, AMT, and paramedic. So like I said before, we'll be able to sit down and discuss that in detail. So.
Nick, Jake, part-timers are in the union?
They are in the union, yes.
Okay, just, thank you.
Yep. The only people that are not are paid on call.
Got it, thank you.
Yep. So that's why you'll see the increase in both part-time wages and then 502 wages.
I have a question. Is that for the same number of hours that this year then, or is it more hours or less hours?
It's actually two additional, or one additional 24 shift. I'd have to look at the detail from last year, which I have here. Yeah, it's two additional shifts. Last year, we budgeted for 120 hours.
Two additional, so 48 hours in the, in the year?
That's seven 24 shifts per month.
Okay. And what was it last year?
Five.
So two shifts per month? So 48 hours per month, 48 times 12?
No, it's two additional from last year. Last year was five days, and next year, we're looking at seven days. Does that make sense?
Seven shifts.
Seven shifts.
And you're, just for clarity, you're talking about part-time wages?
Yeah.
So part-time wages.
If we're getting the same, like, is this the same?
So part-time wages, 102, and correct me if I'm wrong, Chris or Jake, 502, part-time wages is when the part-time person works on 500, our first ambulance, right?
Mm-hmm.
So 502 would be anybody, including full-time people, working on 502. So the seven shifts that he's speaking of is part-timers covering shifts on 500.
Correct.
So when somebody's on vacation.
So vacation, sick, yeah.
And that's more than what we have this year?
Correct.
And why do we need the more hours than we have this year?
That's just the trend we've been seeing over the last two to three years.
Okay.
In the amount of hours that they cover.
Because we're staffing it more, or you have less regular people?
There's more.
No, there's more vacation because our guys went from essentially zero years of prorated vacation amount to now they'll have five days of vacation to use.
Okay.
And that actually was two people this year that had prorated hours that now will have a week's worth of vacation.
So that, that account going up in, in, is a good thing? If we, as long as the overtime account, it saves money in the overtime account. So.
I have the numbers, Nick, if you would like me to discuss that.
No, I, I'm just saying that the more part-time hours we have to cover shifts, the better off we get, because otherwise, we're paying full-time overtime to cover those shifts. Does that make sense?
Yeah, but we're over 7% versus budget in overtime. We're over 22% versus budget in part-time.
That doesn't necessarily mean, this year, our overtime, yeah, it's going up, but it does, I'm just saying, if, if that, if part-time wages, it says 26,000. If we only end up spending 10,000 next year, that's bad, because that means our overtime account's going to be that much higher.
Okay. Sure, but they're all up.
So in 2019, our overtime budget was overspent because of Adam Moriarty's injury. In that aspect, we had to cover his shifts with a paramedic, and at the time, we had only our full-time medics that were able to cover, cover those shifts. This year, we had Mike Anshes and Greg Mauri get hurt. That, well, Greg's was 2019, that transition ended this year through March, I believe, and then he was actually injured again. So it's kind of been a string of injuries that have caused the overtime. I went through and looked at what the difference is between how many hours a full-time person covers compared to a part-time person, and a part-time person actually covers about, well, what would be 150%, but 50% more than what a full-time person covers. So they are saving us quite a bit of money. It was, the last three years was anywhere from like 18 to 24,000 dollars in overtime expenses, which is pretty significant. So what, like Nick was saying, that's the difference that we're seeing, is the, some of those shifts have to be, have to be covered. And then some of that overtime is also a part-time person that's covering 500, and they get paid, they don't get paid the 106 and 6 like a full-time person does. So if they work over 53 hours in a week, they get paid overtime. Whereas sometimes, I'll work 72 hours in a week. Whereas sometimes, I'll work seventy-two hours in a week, and then, I don't get any, I don't get nineteen hours overtime 'cause of that. It's just the way that it is. Does that make sense?
Sure. I guess I'm not sure if I'm communicating effectively either. I mean, we're up in dollars all over the place, and are we having more runs? I guess I don't think I fully understand what's driving all the increases. I mean, we talk about saving money a bunch of different ways, but, and then we have in twenty, we had someone out hurt. Are we budgeting to have someone out hurt again in twenty-one?
I don't know if we could, I don't know if we should budget for that. I mean.
So if we're not, and we had.
That's challenging to, to say, yes, I'm gonna go. You know, I, it's, there's not a large, whoops, there's not a large group of full-time people, so I don't wanna put in the budget, I'm gonna lose one guy for six months.
Sure.
And.
So you're not budgeting for someone to be hurt, is that what I'm hearing you say?
Yeah, yep, correct.
So wouldn't we expect to see a decrease or flat or not up quite so much, I guess? I mean, especially with the ambulance, with sort of the, the.
But, you gotta remember, and what your, your percentages you're comparing to are comparing next year's budget numbers to this year's budget numbers. You're not comparing it to this year's estimated actuals.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Sure.
So if you look at the estimated actuals for this year.
Yeah, but, and full-time wages are way up, though. I mean, I don't know if that would pay or any better 'cause we're at three-ten for estimated actual full-time wages and.
That's because we had somebody out for so long, and that's why our overtime budget is so high this year.
Okay.
Well, and when wages increase, overtime is going to increase also because the amount of money that you're getting paid increases.
Sure.
So you're getting paid more to come in next year than you got paid to come in this year.
Sure, 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 sure. I'm just saying, the increases are, you know, tied to mid-single digits, I would think. I'm just eyeballing it, but it seems like that, and I'm just wondering, are there more people on? Are we having more runs?
No, so I think, I think there's a.
Is wage increase that's driving this?
I understand your question, and I, I agree with, if you just look at that, that makes sense, right? You're just, why is it going up so much? I think part of the reason is, is the, maybe the budget for twenty-twenty was probably a little lighter than it should have been in some areas. Okay? Then, if you look at twenty-twenty estimated actuals, you'll see that the full-time wages is going to be underspent.
Yeah.
That's because we had somebody out. But then, you look down to the overtime, and it's way overspent.
Yeah.
That's why, because somebody was out. But then, looking forward, the overtime budget was at forty-five this year. Next year, it's, it's a seven percent increase to forty-eight. Now, I understand your question. Why is that going up seven percent when we're not planning for someone to not be here? But it's not the fifty-four, which is what we're planning on spending this year. So, I think that's a combination of, maybe it was under-budgeted. There's been, you know, the last couple of years, you look at fifty-six, twenty-nineteen, and also some wage step increases. And then overtime gets kind of, you know, it's not a, a one and a half percent, is not a one and a half percent in overtime.
Sure.
Doesn't it make sense?
It's the same level of service, though, that we have this year. Same number of runs. We're not doing more runs, 'cause the revenue, I guess, is up versus budget. Are there any additional, like, things that are driving that?
I mean, our call volume is up, but that wouldn't necessarily reflect on an overtime or full-time wages.
Because you're staffed all the time, no matter what.
Does that make sense? 'Cause it's just staffed, yeah. I mean, five hundred could run twenty calls in a day, and it's not gonna be reflected on here, other than the fact that revenues would be up.
Okay.
If that makes sense. Our call volume has significantly gone up to, over the last three, four years, so.
Okay.
All right.
Sure, I just want to follow up with Ann, that we had the discussion with our EMS partners in the community or with, you know, we had some cost-saving measures for labor and stuff like that. Where's that plug into this, this wages and stuff? Do you plug any of those savings into these numbers at all?
Yes, you can see what five oh-two's estimated is for twenty-twenty. That's why you don't, and same with twenty-nineteen's actual. That's why we didn't increase that because I don't think that, you know, we'll spend that ninety-four, and then we should be fine there. As a matter of fact, that's actually the average. I wrote it out in the detail of a paramedic and an AEMT working every day, and I don't see that happening. A part-time paramedic and a part-time AEMT, that is. Where we're able to now staff with two EMTs or an AEMT and a EMT or a paramedic and an EMT, if that makes sense. So, we should not be overspending that budget. So that's where that cost savings is coming in.
Hundred eighteen thousand ninety-four, just saying that.
Correct, yeah, yep. A lot of that, the five oh-two wages, has to do with outside hour transports 'cause that's overtime per the union contract automatically for anybody, part-time or full-time. It also includes a fifty-dollar call-in bonus, and then, with the injuries that we had this spring, and that's why I've added quite a few staff over the, the last couple of months to try to alleviate that from happening. It created overtime, and any overtime that five oh-two causes goes into the five oh-two budget. It does not go into the overtime. So there's, the only overtime that goes in there is for five hundred or if somebody comes in for EMS training specifically. It's the only reason that that would get added in there.
While we're here on call wages, when do we use those and where does that get, does that go into five oh-two to five hundred?
Well, those are just if you're paid on call or if you're working in the third spot on our, on the primary ambulance.
When are they paid on call?
That's when they're making, I'd have to look at the pay scale, but anywhere from two to three dollars an hour.
But when, when, when would you use that?
In the EMS.
Yeah, if, essentially, that's how the service started. So. Yeah, they're, they still come in. There's still paid-on-call people that have been on for ten, fifteen years that come in and ride our ambulances and work. So if you're asking if it's a necessity, I'm gonna say no.
Would they take a shift?
But, they are able to fill in if nobody else can.
Why would we have to come in if they're not taking a shift?
I mean, that's up for debate.
I just have a comment. I mean, I just added this quick, just to get back to what I was talking about. So if you just take full-time wages, part-time wages, five oh-two wages, and overtime wages, those four together for the budget were four hundred and seventy-four thousand. For actuals are five eleven, and for the, that's twenty-one budget is four ninety-eight. So there's actually a down, like you said, versus the actuals between the two. It's a five percent increase overall between those four buckets, but it is down from what we're talking about.
Yeah, and I think, and I, I think really what, this is, this budget is probably the most difficult budget we work on, in my opinion, as the administrator, besides court revenues. And, because you can, we can put all these great numbers on this page and do all these calculations and come up with what we think is going to be spent, but it is so driven by after-hours calls and things like that.
Sure.
And five oh-two, I mean, five oh-two expenses, in a, in a sense, are good because it creates more revenue. So, I think this has been a, you know, an evolving budget, and I think we don't have it dialed in yet. I, I think that's part of the problem, too, you know? Five oh-two is pretty young, and every year, we learn a little bit more. And, you know, so, it's hard to compare and say, why is it higher? But I think it's, we're just trying to hone this budget in.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And I just wasn't getting that out of, I guess, these, and I just wanted to come back and just say that if you add those together, it's consistent with what you said, that, you know, this overtime makes sense, I guess.
Yeah.
Um, so, just to come back to that.
Thanks for pointing that out, yep.
Jake, just clarification on the transport after-hours. Nick mentioned it, that it's a revenue maker. Now, are they more of transports, taking them from facility to facility?
Yeah, that's, any after-hours thing is going to a facility.
So is that more Medicare, Medicaid?
Uh, not typically. And if it is, they sign ABN saying that they're willing to pay for it out of pocket, essentially, no matter what. So they get tripped and everything. And a lot of times, if somebody's going facility to facility outside hours, it's not emergent, but it's immediate, which kind of helps the situation on how Medicare, Medicaid looks at it. And then there are some that, you know, we've gotten calls that we won't even take because it's not gonna get reimbursed at all, so.
What is the allowable for that? In a circumstance like that, just a ambulance call like that, say, is it the two hundred dollar charge that you do for a transport? Or is it the higher rate, which I don't know what that higher rate is yet? You know, that rate?
Yeah, it's.
If I call in, I want a transport from my facility to take me to the facility.
Yep.
What am I being charged?
Or, I don't, I don't wanna dispute wrong numbers, but we just went through.
Just a flat rate? Just what's my flat rate? You know, don't care about mileage? Just what is a flat rate ambulance call? You take me to the hospital or to a transport?
Yeah, I don't, like I said, I don't wanna tell you the wrong number, but it's somewhere between six and seven hundred. And then, I know mileage for sure is eighteen dollars for a resident and twenty for a non-resident, but I, we changed ours inter-facility rates and our nine-one-one rates, and there's two, well, three charges for nine-one-ones, and then two for inter-facilities, ALS, BLS, and then ALS, BLS, and ALS-two for nine-one-one.
Do we have that, we have to have that in the sheet for?
Yep, and we just, yeah, we just changed them in December last year.
Is that in the budget somewhere? I mean, typically, the budget that we give, what charges are, fees, what we charge our community thing?
Yeah, our fee schedule.
Our fee schedule?
You're talking about your charge rates?
Yeah.
I mean, just for, I mean, as a village as a whole.
Yeah, we have, Jake has all that, yep.
Okay. That's really what I'm looking for, that from, you know, I, I mean, the village as a whole, but for the ambulances especially, 'cause that may answer some of my questions that I have, but until I know.
Yeah, that's right. I think we should sit down and kind of run.
Can you send that fee schedule, Nick? Can you send that fee schedule to me?
I'll, I can have Jake get it.
I mean, the whole village one, 'cause I know all the ambulance should be on there, and what we charge for the community center, all those types of.
Yeah, that's not, I mean, it's not all the same fee schedule. The EMS one is, is a different, yes. I can send you the fee, our fee schedule.
Thank you. Is that on the website?
Um, most of it probably is, but I could, I'll just.
I don't think our ambulance fees.
The ambulance one's not.
Ambulance fees, that's, that's just the one. I know that's what I'm looking for, so it's not there.
So I, I just looked at this way. Your budget's two thousand twenty, and your estimated two thousand twenty, that's a hundred and ninety thousand dollar shortfall?
What are you looking at, Mike?
I'm looking at, um, the revenue, the revenue. The two thousand twenty budget is thousand twenty-nine, a million twenty-nine, let's change.
Mm-hmm.
And one million two hundred twenty-five fifty-four, so.
So that's revenue, so that's two hundred and twenty-six, or, I'm sorry.
No, I'm sorry.
That's a wrong number.
That's a wrong number.
It's about.
Revenue, again, I did that.
Yep, just about two hundred thousand dollars.
Projecting more revenue.
Correct. That's a good thing.
And that's essentially.
That's the only time we like to see that number up here.
That's essentially because of the ambulance fees, 'cause we budgeted six eighty, and we're projected to hit eight seventy-one. That's where you're gonna see the majority of that money come from.
It is good to take into consideration, though, three thirty-four uncollectible. That's up as well, so it'll offset that revenue some. So we aren't getting, it's on the next page, kind of.
You only get about forty-six percent of it.
Right, so we're not actually getting two hundred thousand dollars of additional revenue. You have to look at what's collected, is it your fifty percent collectible?
Forty, forty, fifty-six.
So about fifty, so a hundred thousand.
Says forty-six percent is what you're saying, uncollectible.
Well, that's the.
That's, yeah. So, and that's where we keep that ambulance fees less than what we're gonna hit this year because of the collection rate changing, 'cause it fluctuates every year depending on our pair group. So, and that's why this, like Nick had said, this budget's challenging to put together because that pair mix changes every single year. So we'll have, you know, twenty percent one year that pays with Medicare and ten percent that pays with commercial, and then the next year, we'll have twenty percent that pays with commercial and ten percent that pays with Medicare. So, it's all dependent on that, essentially.
So I'm gonna go back to that question I did ask, but you're saying a hundred and ninety thousand dollars profit?
No, we'll get to the actual bottom line once we turn the page over.
We have to, yeah.
So, again, running all the way down to two forty-four, probably. Account number, that is. Laundry is going down just a little bit based off what we're projected at this year. A lot of that has to do with if we take in our facility, we're not using our own linens, we're replacing them with, or we're using the hospital's linen, so on and so forth, so that, that has a little bit of savings in it. Dormitory expenses, that's stuff for over at the EMS house. Contracted collections is what we pay LifeQuest to do their job. As you can see, that's increased quite a bit, and that's just based off call volume, essentially. Sooner than later, we'll be sitting down with Tim Rosine, who's the VP of LifeQuest, to discuss that. Typically, they give their percentage rates based off call volume, and our call volume has significantly increased since they started serving us, so I plan in the near future to sit down with him to talk about that. General office is down just based off of what we typically spend over the last couple of years. Telephone, we do have two cellphones and then the two jet packs that that pays for. Dues and subscriptions is going down based off of what we essentially use this year, and Adam has, that's the only accounts that Adam uses as far as dues and subscriptions go, so. Going down to six hundred. Training and conferences, just like I talked about with the, the fire department. I don't suspect that January first, we'll be able to attend a bunch of them. And, the other part of that is our refresher training went from a two-year, or a, yeah, a two-year cycle to a three-year cycle, so now we can kind of spread out our training, so it will lessen the cost per year, so it's kind of both of them mixed together. I don't foresee us traveling next year, that's why there's nothing in there. Hiring is going down a little bit. I'm hoping that the staff that we have now holds through twenty-twenty-one, especially part-time. We're anticipated after spring probably to lose one or two, but right now, I'm at ten, so that should not hurt us at all pending any injuries. Uniforms going down based off essentially what we are at this year and kind of the costs. We went to a different distributor that got us a lot better deals on our, our uniforms. Awards and recognition. We haven't had any EMS-only people receive awards, but there are two coming up. That's why we're still keeping the five hundred dollars in there. Materials, this year is going to be just under what we budgeted, so I'd feel comfortable leaving it at the fifteen thousand just based off the, the increase in call volume that we may see and the increase in costs that come along with medical supplies every year 'cause they typically do jump quite a bit. Fuel and lubricants is basically a projection of where we're at this year. Small tools and equipment staying the same. Safety equipment's going back down to nothing. I believe we replaced a pair of boots for somebody this year that strictly runs EMS calls. Maintenance for pair of vehicles. You can see where we're currently at, what I'm estimating, and then going down from the, the eight thousand that was budgeted with the hopes that nothing significant happens to either of those ambulances. Five hundred, majority of its warranties are through next year. That'll be its five-year mark, so that, that budget may have to increase after next year. Communications.
Civic support and upgrade?
Yeah, Nick and.
That's our accounting software. We upgraded that, it's a four-year payment plan.
And iron responding comes out of that account. The Pyxis, which we use for medications at Synagnes, comes out of that account. Image trend is what we use for our report writing. The uncollectible, obviously, you can see, has gone up quite a bit just based off of the ambulance charges and then what our collection rate is. And then the village hall rent's staying the same, and then that's where the capital equipment gets negated from the revenues. And the first payment, I believe, Nick, you said, is due in twenty-twenty-two.
Twenty-twenty-two.
So we have the, the actual cost of that worked out as well. So we have the, the actual cost of that worked out as well.
Yep.
Yep.
Chris was already at that work doing.
So this year, um, looks like a shortfall of, uh, just under forty-five thousand with the, uh, money from the government that should be here, uh, should be just over thirty-eight thousand dollars of a shortfall. Uh, next year, we're looking at a twenty-one thousand dollar deficit, um, and remember, that's with the, uh, ambulance charges lesser than what we're at this year, um. And that's, if you look back at, uh, what we did as a presentation for the ambulance service as a whole, those were all projections based off our ambulance charges this year, um, so you'll see that the, the number was significantly less, um, I believe it was four or five thousand dollar deficit, so obviously that's the goal, is to hit that, and then we can hopefully get some sort of, uh, baseline over the last two or three years, I think twenty twenty-one will be a big year, to say twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty and twenty nineteen, and get the averages of both the ambulances and what they're charging out, and then we'll be able to put a number in the budget that we're comfortable with. Um, but not having that, uh, is challenging to, to estimate with the ambulance charges, sorry.
John?
Nick, the money that we're running short already, where does that show in here, 'cause I haven't seen a hundred and fifty-seven thousand that.
It's not in here, this is twenty twenty-one's budget.
So we're still running even more of a deficit in that?
Well, that's, yeah, and I mean, this is consistent with what we presented to the board at that presentation, I mean, that, 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 i- if you recall, looking at that, there, there was no payback to the general fund until twenty twenty-two or twenty twenty-three. At that point, they could start paying some money back to the general fund, correct, but your statement is correct, this adds to that deficit.
Keeps growing, 'cause obviously then that twenty-one thousand dollar shortfall is getting paid how?
Well, the general fund covers that, that's, that's how it, at the end, what, at the end of the year, that's the only way it can be done.
So what we're doing is, you know, we talked at the audit, as the auditor said, is we're taking money from the general fund and putting it into an operational budget in that, so if we're running a twenty-one thousand dollar shortfall, would it be a thought to look at? If we reduce those expenses by twenty-one thousand, at least we cover this year, and we gotta continue somehow get back that hundred and fifty-seven thousand or, or so into the main fund moving forward.
Right, i- i- I mean, I guess, going back to that presentation, this is basically what, pretty much the same of what we presented that night, the, the plan that, that we talked about was, you know, moving forward, we need increases to the tax, we're, we're increasing three here, probably two again next year for the, per capita, for the towns and the village, and that.
But at what point, you know, we wanna start paying back what our community has paid in because it's coming out of the general fund that we've paid and which we've covered, it sounded like last year, you didn't thoroughly increase across the board, it was just to the village absorbed a good chunk of that money, and now this year you're raising the rates, which is great, for the surrounding townships to start pairing, paying their fair share, I'm just concerned that we start paying back what we borrowed from the general fund, that it gets back into where it needs to be, and not, we're not using the general fund as the operational budget for any department, be it EMS, fire, police.
Yes, but, I will say, and I, and I think, you know, the auditors hit on it a little bit with, uh, public service, you know, EMS service, it is a, it is not necessarily a money-making or even break-even service, and you'll find that everywhere you go, they don't, they, you know, you, it's always supplemented by something. And in our case, right now, it's supplemented by the general fund. We're working towards getting everybody to pay their fair share, but obviously we can't increase their costs by fifteen dollars in one year and get our money back, right? So that's that, projections we presented is, you know, over the next five to seven years, we're going to show those increases and at some point be able to pay back the general fund.
True, but we, we don't talk about the big thing and people don't like to talk about it, you start looking at, we gotta start reducing that budget by that amount so we're not continually growing, 'cause this is an estimate, I mean, you could have another bad year and that, that upon could skyrocket potentially, looking at it, so we really don't know, it's a best guess estimate, obviously, knowing that these are tough budgets, doing EMS to gauge on it, 'cause it's, it's a, it's a run volume based account, 'cause if you don't have calls, normally you have the expense, but you still have expense, the biggest expense is your employees, which we need, we need an ambulance, don't get me wrong, support the ambulance, we need to maintain it, but are there other things, and that's why I said earlier that we have to look at five oh two, and I wanna see the breakdown of the cost, is that doing what we would like it to do? And that's, I don't know that, until we see the numbers, don't know that. It's generating revenue, absolutely, but it's not paying for everything, it's just helping cover some expenses, or is it not? So that's where you and I can sit down and get those costs to see, is it making what we say it's making and generating, or is it costing us more? And that's even when I first got on, way back when, when we did this, is that we had to look at what it was costing in that. So the idea is, you know, I just don't like continuing taking stuff from the general fund and paying for an operational cost, it's not how you do things, and when, I've done budgets in the past, it's been, whoop, we have a twenty-one thousand dollar deficit, no, we're gonna be zero.
But how, I'm just curious, John, I'm not, I'm just, I'm curious, that's why I'm asking, but the city of Fontex EMS budget, does it make money?
It generates revenue, you, you pay for the taxes, your revenues, your revenues equals your expenses.
They do their budget a little different than.
They do it different, I don't know, that's what I'm asking, but I, I've talked to, I've talked to smaller communities like Berlin, and Berlin's, and, you know, they, their, their EMS is, they're very, very short-funded.
Yeah.
Your revenues match your expenses.
I think that's the idea, John, is what, you know, if, that presentation, I think, was trying to, to, to paint that picture, if five oh two, yes, it does make a little bit of money, it does help offset, if five oh two, in my opinion, if five oh two was not in this budget, that twenty-one would be greater. It would be more of a negative, based on the numbers that I look at and know, um, and I think that's what we tried to show in that, that presentation, is that, that is, there is some revenue over expenses, of what it's truly, it is making some money that helps reduce that, now, it's certainly made a lot of money in the last three months, two months, um, that has helped reduce those costs.
And numbers will show it, that's why you break it down, I'm in numbers, I look at the visual, you know, if I can look at, you know, I look at the costs, is it a break-even thing? I mean, there's just things when you're running, I get, ambulance, ambulance is one of those necessities you have to have in the community, absolutely, and I su- I support, if I don't even give you a minute, I'm not, I, I support that. I'm just looking at, we have to look at the budget, how do we get the budget in line, so we're not continually having to use the general fund to bail out, keep borrowing to borrow to borrow, that's not.
But that's, I think, John, that's what, that's what we showed you, that's, that is our plan.
But again, speaking with the auditors, he goes, it's not good practice to continue to borrow money to, for operational costs, and when we had that conversation, he said it's not a good practice, and I agree with that. You have to cover the budget.
I do too.
So the idea is, if it's twenty-one thousand, instead of saying, well, we gotta get caught up down the road, well, sometimes you have to take a even harder look in looking at our budget, what is it in their budget that can help us get to that, so, that's, that's my view, I'm only one.
No, I, I, I understand what you're saying, I think we've done that, I mean, this, trust me, Jake, Jake and I, we have an internal, the last email he sent me was his eleventh take at the budget, literally, I mean, I can show you the email. We, we, we met a lot, and we, this is not the budget that was presented first, I mean, this is literally the twelfth version of this that we've gone through to try and trim out what we can trim out. So, I know you're seeing this for the first time and this is all you see, but trust me, there's a lot of, you know, there is a lot of thought that goes in this, we have done what we can, I believe, um, there's, there's only, like you mentioned, I mean, police, fire, EMS, it's, it's eighty, ninety percent personnel, so, you know, there's only one way to significantly cut expenses in these budgets. And, you know, that, that's a, a decision that, y- y- we can't staff it without the six full-time people.
And I, I didn't mention, that's not.
No, I'm not, I'm not, I didn't.
Twenty-one thousand dollars is something that you can look at, some things, you know, twenty-one thousand's not gonna break, you look at a budget, start looking at it, don't get me wrong, I, I support the statistics, we need to keep our ambulance running and all that, it's just some, maybe some of the other things we can look at that we get it. We need to start catching up and start paying for what we borrow, because we are a hundred and fifty-seven thousand dollars prior to me getting on now, or potentially, hopefully it's a positive.
Yeah, I mean, that's.
Depending where it goes, we don't know.
Yeah.
But the idea is you're forecasting a twenty-one thousand dollar deficit, you know, again, we're using money from, from, um, our general fund and it's just not a practice I like doing.
The other thing that has kinda worked into this is that average of ambulance charges includes March, April and May, so our call volume significantly increased since those three months. So, I mean, I'm not gonna throw numbers out, but the ambulance charges could be under-projected, so to speak, than what, you know, if you take those averages out of the equation, if that makes sense.
Okay.
So hopefully it is less, hopefully it's not the thirty-eight thousand dollars, hopefully, you know, we can get down to twenty twenty-five this year, and then hopefully next year, we exceed the eight seventy-one, run more calls, and then, if that's the case, I think if you plug in eight seventy-one with the percentage, you know, you're looking at a, a couple thousand dollars in a deficit, you know? So if you exceed the eight seventy-one, that should be depleted pretty quickly, if that makes sense.
Okay.
John?
You know, all along when that transport service was started, it was, the goal was to help supplement the five hundred call, because five hundred as itself, it's hard to make, make, balance the budget. And, uh, I think what we just played several weeks ago shows that sometimes you have to take losses for a couple of years to get some service going, and a lot of the efforts that you've made to make contracts with certain hospitals and things that are, are making great strides and that happening, so, uh, you know, even though, like you say, you don't wanna be losing money every year, um, what's losing money is five hundred, and I think the transport service is eventually gonna start picking up on that and, and help offset that.
Yeah, I think our, our part-time wages for five oh two is gonna go down, you know, that, that budget next year, I think, is more or less what we're gonna spend compared to what we've spent this year, and what's projected to be spent this year, just based off what we did with changes to the, the operational plan at the state level. 'Cause you can, I mean, if you look at the months where, where five oh two is not accumulating overtime, uh, there's a large gap in revenue compared to expenses in a, in a good way, and if we can continue that trend, um, and I don't, I, looking at seventeen and eighteen's a, a tricky thing to do, because our call volume isn't where it's been nineteen and twenty. And that's why I think, once we get to, through twenty twenty-one, you'll be able to see, you know, this is kinda the standard now, and this is what we have to hit type of, uh, situation with five oh two, and this is how much staff we have to, have to do it without creating that overtime, so, I think, once we get through next year, it'll, we'll be able to see more solidified numbers that are gonna be able to make our projections, you know, that we presented a little bit more solidified, and we hopefully will be able to fluctuate those numbers to, to reflect, um, what that three-year average is, instead of starting in the middle of seventeen, um, and hopefully make it a little bit better.
John, to your point, I, I'm sorry, go ahead, Mike.
Mike, what you got?
I just, you know, I just followed with, uh, with, uh, John said, I mean, I, I think a hundred, a million two seventy-seven budget, um, I think you can find twenty-one thousand dollars throughout that, uh, missing expenses. But okay, two thousand twenty, your budget, what you budgeted and what you estimated, a hundred and ninety thousand dollars more, and we still came forty-four thousand dollars short, so, I mean, it just amazes me that, you know, let's say we would've came in at budget, we would've been two hundred and thirty thousand dollars, I mean, there's.
Can I say a little bit about that?
Yeah, yeah, the uncollectibles, I see.
Yeah, if you look at, yeah, if you look at, they budgeted, I think, col- us to collect fifty-four percent, and they're only collecting forty-some percent, so they're collecting less too. I mean, if you look, just, if you take three twelve and divide it by six eighty, that's the uncollectible, so the experience that they were expecting, I think they expected to collect more of that, so we are collecting more, but we're collecting less of each dollar, if you take those all together, it's actually only twenty-seven thousand dollars more. When you take six.
Are those in the rental part?
Yeah, if you take six eighty and subtract three twelve, you get a number, and if you take eight seventy-one and subtract four seventy-six and do that math, it's actually twenty-seven thousand dollars more, it's a little bit misleading, and then.
So you actually get a fifty thousand more, because of forty-nine and one ninety, and.
Well, you just take, I mean, I just took six eighty and subtracted three thirteen, just say, so that's three sixty-seven, and then eight seventy-one and subtracted, uh, four seventy-seven, just say. So eight seventy-one minus four seventy-seven, that's three ninety-four, and three ninety-four minus three sixty-seven is twenty-seven thousand dollars. So it looks like it's a lot, but when you do kind of that, so they're collecting less of each dollar they bill as well, versus what was budgeted, and then the.
But I agree with John, we're going in the wrong direction, I mean, when we closed the gap, and when we went with the townships, we only like budgeted two for two dollars, we actually gave three, so we should've had a little bit more, um.
Had the ten thousand.
Lost that, a little bit too, the ten thousand for eleven thousand that we wanted presented to us.
The other, in, in two thousand and eighteen, and correct me if I'm wrong, Chris, but I believe the deficit was a hundred and nineteen thousand, um, overall, and last year, we got it down to fifty-nine, and this year, hopefully, we're in, you know, thirty-five to forty, so it has, we've been able to close that, the amount that we're losing, and hopefully, you know, next year, adding, you know, roughly thirty-three thousand with, uh, the, uh, per capita, um, and I don't wanna, like I've said, uh, previously, I don't wanna over-project the ambulance fees, um, but if you, if you take where we're currently at and duplicate it, you know, it looks pretty decent on paper.
One last thought, I mean, I think that when we had all the, and we had, uh, the project here, I mean, we actually raised a little bit more, and we still kind of, uh, with a, with a deficit on our budget, I think that we, we do expand, uh, I think, I think we need to try to close that gap.
And that's what I was gonna say, when, when you were gonna speak, um, I'll go, Jake and I'll go back and look at this again, um. What I, we have to be careful of too, is not just, you know, fictitious, I'm not, you know, just, just taking money out of accounts, knowing that, that's really not realistic, so, I feel like what we put in here was, was, we're trying to be realistic in it, so, we'll go again, and we'll look at this again, um, and like I said, we're still going through those negotiations, so there's some assumptions made in there right now that may or may not change, obviously, and, um, those are things that we can also discuss, so, I think, if there's nothing, I think I, I got the sentiment of the board of, in looking forward. If there's nothing, like, specifically glaring in here, I guess, for accounts, we'll go back and give it a once-over again, um, for, um, another time, but, um.
Twelve times the charge.
Thirteen and fourteen, fifteen.
Thirteen to charge.
No, no, it, it.
Yeah.
Hopefully.
Should we be hours for, then we offer the seven seven service, can we go seven to five or something, I mean, in the ways, then we can cut that transport service a little bit, and so we can.
Yeah, a lot of our calls come in from three P to seven P.
What's that?
A lot of our transports come in from like, two to three PM to seven PM. So having them here during that time is kinda key, and then they, they either start in the morning, or they start at, you know, mid-afternoon. So there's like a gap from maybe eleven to one or two or whatever, that we don't see a high call volume, but a lot of patients, if they go into a ED or, are on a floor, they'll stay there, uh, and we, in discussions with the hospitals, they'll stay there until we get staff here at six thirty, seven in the morning, then we'll send an ambulance to move them, um, and then, later on in the day, the hospitals find a room for somebody, and then we take them from point A to point B, so a lot of our return to nursing homes, uh, skilled, uh, nursing facilities, so on and so forth, happen from like seven to ten or eleven, and a lot of our hospital, the hospital happens from one to two PM until seven PM. If that makes sense, so I, I think it'd be a bad thing that's kinda to do, just based off, I'll call somebody in, they're gonna be more willing to come in at five PM than they are at nine, ten, eleven, twelve, one, two, three in the morning, so they'll come in at five PM then, and then get paid double time, or not double time, time and a half, and then a fifty-dollar column bonus, if that makes sense. Just 'cause our call volume's so high rate in that kinda time period. Does that make sense, Mike?
Just looking at all options.
Yeah, oh, yeah, I, I.
Chris?
I just wanna make one comment, um, just for the fact that this deficit was here well before five oh two service even began. So just, so we keep that in mind, I mean, the deficit was here years ago, before we even had the five oh two service, and I think it would've kept growing if we didn't bring five oh two.
growing if we didn't bring 502, it's not as high as it was, I mean, the year we bought the ambulance was the year we had the major deficit, so, just, just to throw that out there too.
We will, uh, go back and take a look to see if there's anything that we can find to change in here to, to squeeze some more out of it, um, and I guess that, you know, if we, probably bring that back at one of the future meetings when somebody else, hopefully for a short discussion, um, the next meeting we have is September 21st at this point, with library and court, I believe.
Yeah.
So, we do have a large break here, so that's really where, that's, you know, for the next three weeks internally here, that Chris and I talked to, we're just, we're gonna be really working hard on budget revenues, you know, getting all that stuff dialed, and a lot of that revenue stuff, we don't get from the state for some time here, there's different revenue sources, we don't get those numbers until September, October timeframe, so it's hard to get too far ahead building this, but, um, that's really what we're gonna be focusing on the next three weeks, I'll meet with Jake, and we'll, we'll discuss this again, and see if we can come up with some solutions, um, and some suggestions, and if any of the board members have any suggestions, or just wanna discuss this further on, you know, feel free to reach out and come meet with us, or whatever, so, um, but like I said, there's nothing, besides what's been talked about glaring in here at this point, we'll go back and take a look at it, um, and see what we can come up with.
I just have one more thought, is that 25% split with Jake's wage from fire to EMS, is that a fair split, is that, could it be more than you do the fire side?
It's not, I would say it's a fair split, but we did, we have discussed, I mean, that's one thing we talked about through this process, it's just, it's a, it's a give and take, you know, I mean, Adam does a lot of training and stuff, and those are, those people are on both sides of it too, so Adam's 100% EMS right now, so, I mean, that would fix it, that alone would fix it, but then that's, that's also just, you know, so, what's fair is fair, right, but at the same time, we're adding $15,000 to the general fund this year for, per capita, so are we gonna add another 21,000, that's, you know, that's, that's, so, you know, that... And that might be the solution we come up with, you know, that, it's...
I'll set that budget to 3.9, I'm ready, so that'll push that up to 4,500.
I didn't follow you.
Turns out 3.9 are ready, so by adding that, I mean, it'll push that up to 4,500.
Right, and that's all the general fund, you know, so then that's gonna be...
You'll never get that back, at least this way, there's a plan to kind of get it back eventually, right?
I think we've overstated our welcome, I heard the air, air conditioning system turned on.
There it goes, it's back on again.
So, anybody have anything else on this, or any questions before we wrap it up? All right, if not, we appreciate, uh, Darren and Jake representing tonight, thank you for walking us through.
It is, yeah, I, I appreciate all the discussion, it's good, because, like I said, we, sometimes, you know, we do work this stuff every day, and I, you know, sometimes it's hard to just get this in, over a weekend and review it, and, and have, and know it all, right, so I, I appreciate the discussion, so...
All right, so, if there's nothing else on this item, move on to communications, any communications? Any unfinished business, so Nick, we don't, there's no need for a September 7th meeting?
Uh, 14th, no.
Or 14th, I mean?
7th is the holiday, we were gonna, we threw the 14th out there as a, no, at this point, no, at this point, no.
And then, if, if there's something you can look into for me, um, when we did the CDGB grant at first, like when we first got that, I think it was like $750,000, um, and we had that committee, now just MSA takes care of it, like houses that, that sell, um, do we get that money back, because that one that just sold on Michigan, like 526, it sat for like 10 years, and I'm just, I'm just curious, do we get that money out of it, if you could look into that and see?
Chris can answer that.
Oh, Chris?
Right, so every loan that was taken out, cause you said on that board, it was, uh, it was recorded at the register of deed, so, when a home sells, unless it goes into, you know, unless it's foreclosed upon or there's bankruptcy, um, that money comes back to the village.
Into the, into the fund, into the revolving loan, okay, is that still going then?
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Okay, good, okay, cool, all right, all right, nevermind, and, well, thank you for that answer, any other unfinished business? All right, uh, new business, any new business?
Just one thing, Mike.
Yes?
Just thinking about the capital plan, and just talking with some residents regarding some of flooding issues that we've had, and they've been significant, you know, with the pond where we're shutting down prospect, and, you know, I had, I had some conversation, kinda went over there, we have smaller pipes that go underneath the road, would it be better to make bigger ones to go underneath there, as far as flow through it, or is it, does it matter? You know, the restricted flow, because the pond gets so high, and then it backs up, and it's not flowing through...
So those pot, those outlets, and I can, I can go in a lot of detail on this, but those, those outlets are designed to, what we were talking about earlier, they're, they're designed to slow the flow down.
Slow it down.
Um, we have cleaned out the ditch, we're actually planning on digging that ditch out, it's a good question, cause we, we haven't experienced that, but the rain has changed, it seems, um, but, we're, we're cleaning that ditch out at some point, we're, we're actually just working on getting some numbers put together to, to clean the ditch downstream from those culverts, the culverts probably aren't necessarily the problem, is that the water can't get away fast enough, the culverts can't be changed.
Okay.
We have looked into that, um, because that is what limits the flow out of the pond, which is, it's a stormwater pond, so, we are, we have looked into that.
Second one is that Chaplone Chapman.
Yep.
The flood.
Yep.
I mean, that thing is dips from all directions in there, and I think we had a conversation once, or someone, someone from here, maybe it was Mitch, that the storm is too small to handle that amount of water in there, is that accurate, or is there some plan to fix it, not, I don't see it as on the five-year plan?
That's an accurate statement, we do have also another plan for that we're working on.
Perfect.
Yep.
Thank you.
All right, anything else? All right, got a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion to adjourn.
In a second?
A second.
Got a motion by Price, second by Horning to adjourn, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none, thanks everybody for coming, appreciate it.